Good evening, everyone. If you all can take your seats and quiet down, we'd appreciate it. And we'll get going with the meeting in a second. All right. So, good evening and welcome, everyone, to the Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Boulder City Council. I hereby call this meeting to order. And Elisha, if we could have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We'll start tonight's roll call, as usual, with Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Councilmember Folkers.
Present.
Marquess.
Present.
Shuhard.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Spear.
Present.
Councilmember Wallach.
Here.
And Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our quorum.
Thanks so much. So now, if I could have a motion, please, to amend the agenda. We've got a few changes here. One is to postpone or remove Item One B, a declaration against antisemitism and Islamophobia, which will be scheduled for a meeting coming very soon to allow for additional community outreach. To add Item Three I, which is consideration of a motion to convert the March seventh and twenty-first regular meetings from in-person to virtual, as council chambers will be closed for renovations. And to reorder Eight A and Eight B, so that now Item Eight A will be discussion to confirm council's position to decline or accept moving forward with a consideration of a ceasefire resolution regarding the Israeli-Gaza conflict. And Item Eight B will be a discussion on two thousand and twenty-four walks and chats with council.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, the agenda is amended. Mark, did you?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Okay, that's unanimous. And we will begin our meeting with Item One A, which is the Black History Month Declaration to be presented by Councilmember Marquess. Tina? Come on, over here. And I believe we have people here to receive the declaration. If you all would like to come join us here on the dais, please.
Hi. Well, I'm very pleased to read this resolution for Black History Month in February two thousand and twenty-four. The month of February has received national recognition as Black History Month. This month and all year, the Boulder City Council invites community members to join the Boulder Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, the Center for African and African-American Studies, CAAS, and other community organizations in celebrating Black and African-American history, culture, and stories. In two thousand and seventeen, the Boulder Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People was established in Boulder with the purpose of promoting civic engagement, eradicating racial prejudice, and eliminating racial discrimination in education, employment, housing, and civil rights. The Boulder County Branch of the NAACP is dedicated to upholding the mission of equality and justice for all, as championed by the NAACP since its founding in nineteen oh nine. Educating and fostering a sense of community inclusive and respectful of all is needed to affect understanding and facilitate positive change. The Boulder County Branch of the NAACP is honored to extend an invitation to all to attend the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Freedom Fund at the University of Colorado Boulder's Mackey Auditorium on this Sunday, February eighteenth, starting at three P M. The Freedom Fund is a longstanding tradition that brings together NAACP members and community supporters to raise funds to support the operations of the local branch. Guests will hear from featured guest Mr. Anthony Ray Hinton, who endured and triumphed over nearly thirty years on Alabama's death row for a crime he did not commit and was exonerated in two thousand and fifteen with the help of the Equal Justice Initiative. In addition to Mr. Hinton's powerful story, the event will feature a performance by Danielle Ponder, a talented entertainer and singer-songwriter, whose soulful lyrics and vocals highlight inspiring themes of social justice and empowerment. The event is free and open to the public. In addition to the annual Freedom Fund, this year marks a significant milestone for the university's Center for African and African-American Studies. In two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Jared Polis proclaimed the first day of Black History Month each year, February first, as the CAAS Day in recognition of the center as a resource to not only the University of Colorado Boulder, but also to the entire state. The CAAS is proud to have celebrated its first anniversary on Thursday, February first, two thousand and twenty-four, through an event featuring food, music, dance, poetry, and other Africana-cultural expressions. The event was attended by Governor Polis, who shared brief remarks and words of encouragement to the CAAS community. If you are looking for other ways to celebrate, the University of Colorado Art Museum introduced a new exhibition on Friday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Museum for Black Girls curated by Charlie Billingsley and Von Ross. The exhibition will be on view from February tenth to July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado, declare February two thousand and twenty-four as Black History Month. And now I have the pleasure of giving this resolution to Madeline Strong Woodley, who is here joining us today, and invite her to make some remarks.
Yay. Yes. Thank you so much, too, Mayor Brockett, city council members. We are honored to be here to accept this special designation, declaration, proclamation. It is very special. On behalf of the NAACP, oh, before I go any further, is Madonna on the line? Madonna Woodley? She was gonna call in. Okay. On behalf of Madonna Stella Woodley. Uh huh. Okay, great. And on behalf of the NAACP, along with the ECASE, which is the Executive Committee for African-American Cultural Events, CAAS, Center for African and African-American Studies, Dr. Rabaka, and the community, I'll have to include you because you're who makes the difference. You keep us lifted and keep us moving on. We appreciate this honor. We certainly hope to see you Sunday at Mackey at three o'clock. Doors open at two. And you can register through NAACPbouldercounty.org or just come. That's what, we just wanna see your face and place. And I just wanna say that these events and our efforts are designed to educate. Education is at the core, because the more we learn about our differences, the more we'll understand our similarities. And with that, we will be able to become a better community as we grow and we support each other. So, again, thank you on behalf of those organizations that are named, and I'll be looking for every one of you come Sunday. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for that, Ms. Woodley, and we'll see you there on Sunday afternoon. Look forward to it. Okay, we're going to go now to open comments. So, Elisha, if you could go over our public participation guidelines, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Brockett. Elisha Johnson, serving the city as your city clerk and records manager. Thank you all for being here, and I'd like to review very quickly the public participation guidelines at city council meetings. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit our website at boldercolorado.gov/services/productive-atmospheres. The following are examples of rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. Note, all remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole names before being allowed to speak online. Currently, we only offer audio testimony online. In-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement verbally or with applause, with the exception of declarations. Traditionally, support is shown silently through American Sign language applause or jazz hands. Again, we appreciate you being here, and I will turn it back to you, Mayor Brockett.
Thanks so much, Elisha. All right, so we're gonna go into open comment here. Everyone has two minutes to speak, and I do want to emphasize that we do wanna hear from all of our speakers, and we want all of our speakers to have the chance to speak their minds without any form of interruption or disruption. So we'll just ask everybody to please be quiet during testimony. The applause for Black History Month is our last applause of the evening, if we could, please, and then people will have their exact two minutes to speak, and we look forward to hearing from everyone. So, our first three speakers are Dagny Fladen, Elliot Fladen, and Giselle Hertzfeld. So, Dagny.
My name is Dagny, and as only a twelve-year-old, I think adults should be expected to act at least as mature as me. So I expect grown adults to act at least as mature as I would in school. Here's how I have to act in my school. I have to wait my turn to talk. I have to not interrupt while others are talking and not insult others for what they say in the classroom. And if I don't follow these rules, then I'm either given a warning, sent to the principal's office, or sent home. So, is it too much to ask for this council to hold everybody to that standard tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, Dagny. Now we have Elliot Fladen, Giselle Hertzfeld, and Marlee Rosenzweig.
Elliot Fladen, Superior Colorado. Contrary to what they may believe, the crowds of people that have gone from city council meeting to city council meeting do not represent the people of the United States, the state of Colorado, or whatever city there before de jour that day. And I don't say that lightly, I have data. Please, if you look at your screens, you will see a Harvard CAPS-Harris poll from January seventeenth to the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide. Look on the left. Question: Do you think that Hamas would like to commit genocide against the Jews in Israel, or is that not a goal of Hamas? Seventy-four percent of recipients of people questioned said that Hamas would like to commit genocide against the Jews. Again, voters in America. Next question, on the right side. Do you think Hamas is an organization that can be negotiated with to create peace, or is Hamas dedicated only to the destruction of Israel? Sixty-seven percent say that Hamas is dedicated only to the destruction of Israel. The next slide's gonna be very important. Next slide, please. If, do you favor an unconditional ceasefire in the Israel-Hamas war? Sixty-seven percent say, contrary to the proclamation that some want to have advanced, that a ceasefire should happen only after the release of all hostages and Hamas being removed from power. Next slide. Most voters think that Israel is trying to avoid civilian casualties in the conflict, and it is not committing genocide. That's sixty-nine percent to thirty-one percent margin. And if you look at sixty-six to thirty-four percent, that Israel is just trying to defend itself and eliminate Hamas. Next slide. Do you think that the nature of the attacks on Jews were genocidal in nature or not genocidal? Referring to October seventh, seventy-four percent of Americans say they are, they were genocidal. Do you think that Hamas killing two hundred Israeli civilians and kidnapping another two fifty can be justified? Seventy-five percent say not justified. These are the views of the American people, not the protesters who claim to support, to be the people. Thank you.
Thanks. Now we have Giselle Hertzfeld, Marlee Rosenzweig, and Flanders Lorton.
Good evening, members of the Boulder City Council. My name is Giselle Hertzfeld, and I work with the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center in Boulder. You have heard and will continue to hear many compelling reasons for supporting a ceasefire in Gaza, so I will not focus the majority of my time today on the fact that Israel launched one of its deadliest bombing campaigns during Super Bowl Sunday, knowing that Americans' attention would be focused on their favorite team and not the over one hundred Palestinians who got massacred in Rafah in a single day. I will not focus on the over twenty-eight thousand five hundred murdered Palestinians to date, or the fact that I woke up on Monday morning to an image of a young Palestinian's Palestinian's girl's corpse hung on a wall for her grieving community to find. Her name was Sidra Hasuna, and she was twelve years old. No, today I will focus on the topics of Islamophobia and antisemitism in our own community. I have deep concerns regarding the conflation of the pro-Palestine movement or of criticism of Israel with antisemitism. It is dangerous to conflate these two things, and it is especially dangerous for the Jewish-Palestinian and Muslim members of our community. There is an alarming rise in antisemitism going on. There has been a rise in antisemitism long before October seventh, fueled by the far-right white nationalists who felt empowered by our country's previous president to be openly hateful, racist, antisemitic, and Islamophobic in a way that they had not previously felt empowered. These hateful ideologues are not part of the pro-Palestine movement. They would never join the pro-Palestine movement, and they would never, ever be welcome in the pro-Palestine movement. In addition to the rise in antisemitism that we hear about all the time, there is also an alarming rise in Islamophobia going on that has gone virtually ignored. When Islamophobia is acknowledged, it is almost always brought in at the end as an afterthought. In conversations about Islamophobia and antisemitism, Muslim voices are almost always brought in last with minimal time for meaningful contribution, if they are brought to the table at all, which far too often they are not. If we want to represent our full community in a way that is just, equitable, and inclusive, we must have all impacted parties welcome to the table from the beginning. The Muslim community has experienced a lot of hatred, bigotry, and threats that have gone totally ignored, and when...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Marlee Rosenzweig, Flanders Lorton, and Ryan LeBlanc.
Hi, council. I'm Marlee Rosenzweig. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. In recent times, we have witnessed a disturbing trend in Colorado, as the rise in antisemitism threatens the very fabric of our communities. The events that unfolded in Denver on Monday at the council meeting were not only unacceptable, but also indicative of a deeper issue that we cannot afford to ignore. We must stand firm against the tide of hatred that seeks to divide us based on religion or ethnicity. We cannot continue our cities to descend into the same depths of intolerance and bigotry that plagues the larger cities like New York or Chicago. What happened in Dallas at their city council meeting last night was yet another reminder of the pervasive nature of this problem. Let me be clear, Israel is not committing a genocide. The accusation itself is not only false, but deeply offensive to those of us who hold our Jewish heritage. Who hold our Jewish heritage here. It's disgusting and labeling as complicit. And labeling us as complicit in a genocide is simply because of our faith is just not okay. For those of you that don't understand the definition of genocide, the definition of genocide is the intentional, intentional destruction of a people as a whole. This is not what's going on at all. I refuse to cower in the face of such baseless hatred. I will not hide, my star David, I will not hide all the different...
People, if you can be quiet, please.
I will not hide for all the hostages that are still there. I will not remove my masseuse from my door frame, none of you should. We must confront antisemitism head-on, whether it rears its ugly head here, but we really must educate, advocate, and stand in solidarity against the discrimination. Thank you.
Time's up. Thank you. Just remind, folks, please no outbursts during people's testimony. Everyone has the right to speak without being interrupted. Now we have Flanders Lorton, Ryan LeBlanc, and Michelle Rodriguez.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Flanders Lorton. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote on a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Over the last one hundred and twenty-eight days, the violence we have seen livestreamed on our screens is unlike anything we have ever witnessed. We have seen parents and children carrying their family members' limbs in plastic bags. We have seen young girls watching their father being burned alive. Videos of children's arms and legs being amputated on makeshift operating tables without anesthetic, and we have seen countless videos of bodies trapped under the rubble or dying in the street, and videos of families desperately hugging the white cloth-wrapped corpses of their loved ones. These horrific images are not the exception, but the grotesque daily reality of the violence perpetuated by Israel in the Gaza Strip. The only thing the people of Gaza want is to have normal lives. They are regular people who used to go to work in their offices, restaurants, schools, and hospitals. Students go into universities and working hard in their classes. But this dream of a regular life has been taken from them, as their hospitals, mosques, universities, and nearly three hundred thousand homes have been partially or completely destroyed by Israeli bombs, and two point two million Gazans have been forcibly displaced, bombed, shot at, and intentionally starved of food and humanitarian aid. On January twenty-sixth, the International Court of Justice ruled that the case brought forward by South Africa charging Israel with violating the Genocide Convention is plausible, and therefore issued provisional measures ordering Israel to take all measures within its power to prevent killing or causing serious bodily or mental harm to Palestinians, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or part, and take immediate and effective measures to enable the provision of urgently needed basic services and humanitarian assistance to address the inverse conditions of life faced by Palestinians in the Gaza Strip. Despite this, the assault on Gaza has only increased. Israel continues to slaughter hundreds of Palestinian civilians every twenty-four hours, and they continue to block humanitarian aid from entering through the border crossing. Israel has now begun to bomb Rafah, which is the only remaining official safe zone in Gaza and the location of one point five million internally displaced refugees. A strike on a kindergarten in Rafah last Sunday had killed two sheltering children, and this is just one of many, and an unending assault that has killed or injured over one hundred thousand civilians in just four months.
Thank you. Now we have Ryan LeBlanc, Michelle Rodriguez, and Rob Smoke. Do we have Ryan in the room? Oh, here he comes.
Good evening, council. My name is Ryan. Was born, raised right here in Boulder, Colorado, graduated from Fairview, and was bar mitzvahed down at Har HaShem on Baseline Road. I'm a proud Jew. I always have been. And I've been proud to say I come from this city. Taught me a lot of things. Love for nature, love for the arts, and it also taught me a love for justice and equity. So you'll understand why I've been a little bit baffled that there's even really been discussion on whether we should issue a statement for justice in the Middle East by calling for ceasefire in Gaza. Don't get me wrong, antisemitism is very real. That is absolutely true. But the enormous anti-Zionist Jewish community has experienced it, including myself. But we know that the Zionist agenda is being used as an excuse. Excuse me, that the Zionist agenda would have us believe that antisemitism is being used and as an excuse for this plausible genocide that's going on, which in itself is not only antisemitic, but also spits in the face of the ancestors who suffered and died to bring us the liberties we have today, and ignores the fact that Israel's actions have only made this world less safe for Jews like me, and worst of all, is killing thousands of Palestinian civilians in the process. Over eleven thousand children have been killed. For context, can you imagine if every city school in Boulder was being actively bombed, children were being slaughtered as we speak, and cities around the world went... Sorry, we don't comment on foreign affairs. Would that be acceptable to you? Make us proud. Make us proud to say we live here. Be stronger, be braver. Be bolder.
Thank you. Shh, should, please, quiet, please. Quiet, please. Okay, next we have Michelle Rodriguez, Rob Smoke, and Brenda Mahos.
Hi, guys. Michelle Rodriguez. First off, I wanted to acknowledge the young lady, Ms. Dagny Fladen. Very proud of your courage to get up here and speak. I wanna remind the people, everybody in here other than her and maybe one other young child or adults. As much as our silence might be violence, that aggression is oppression. It's unacceptable. I was humiliating, humiliated and embarrassed for the behavior of a lot of these people, though their passion runs deep, and I sympathize, and my sympathy, I know, means nothing. We can't behave like this, especially in front of our children, in this city, in front of other congregations. For no race was that acceptable. other congregations. For no race was that acceptable. These people are here mostly on a volunteer thing, because you couldn't pay me enough to put up with what they put up with the last few weeks. And I know, we know that a ceasefire is what's needed. Silence, some silence was golden. I found a lot of power in this room when somebody took some of their time to acknowledge it in silence and gave prayer for those that are still being held and are in harm's way. I'd like to do that with the remainder of my time tonight, and I encourage people to keep it civil for the young people that are watching there of the future. Now, if we can take that moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Rob Smoke, Brenda Mahos, and Elise Mordos.
Good evening. My name is Rob Smoke. I live in Boulder. And I just want to say I'm an American Jew, and I support Freedom for Palestine, liberation from being occupied by Israel. And I think a ceasefire resolution is just the absolute barest shred of what's needed. I mean, there's so much more needed by people whose lives are imminently at risk. And I particularly just want to make sure that I say this one thing, which is, you know, I know what hypocrisy is, because I love putting vegan ranch dressing on a chicken sandwich. And, you know, I just don't want to be, you know, so lacking in self-awareness that making comments about hypocrisy, you know, just doesn't ring. True. But in this case, I think if there are a resolution being considered for the same events happening to Jewish Israeli children, you know, if we knew that 12,000 of them had been murdered in the space of 114 or 115 days, would we hesitate to have a resolution? If we stand on the sidelines, we're just doing what the aggressor wants us to do. If we just say, "Oh, we can't, we can't take a side here. We're not with Hamas." Well, it's not a question of being with Hamas. The people who are being slaughtered, literally slaughtered, and are in a death camp in Rafah right now are children, and women, women and children, who, you know, have no choice about Hamas or no Hamas. They're just barely doing everything they can to possibly survive against incredible odds. And to say that we're just gonna not take sides, that really is taking sides.
Time is up. Thank you. Next speakers are Brenda Mahos, Elise Mordos, and Joseph Stein.
Good evening. I was born in Boulder, and I've lived here most of my life. I volunteer with several organizations working with the Palestinians and Israel in the West Bank, and I've visited the area seven times over the past decade. I'm here to ask you to move forward with the consideration of a ceasefire resolution for Gaza, Israel and the West Bank. This also includes the safe return of Israeli hostages and Palestinian prisoners, many who are children as young as 12, and the formation of an immediate corridor in Gaza for a meaningful humanitarian aid. The invasion into Rafah this past weekend, a city Gazans were told to retreat to, demonstrates how urgent a ceasefire resolution is. The situation is horrific and dire. Signing the resolution is mainly symbolic, but signals that Boulder believes in our shared humanity and that our actions, however local, carry global implications. The climate crisis is an example of how what happens elsewhere affects us all. In addition, Boulder has a sister city in the West Bank and Israel. We are a globally connected community. Polls show that most Americans favor a ceasefire in Gaza. The filled city council chamber in your recent meeting signals that a ceasefire resolution is important to Boulderites as well. By supporting the resolution, we are not one-sided. We are simply saying we value all life. We will not regret it. It will not make our city more divided unless we make it so. Finally, I ask the city council to consider the restrictions on the Boulder-Nablis Sister City Project. We're the only Boulder sister city with restrictions on our speech. I was the BNSCP chair last year, and after October 7th, we were asked to remove a letter on our Facebook site. And I was assisted multiple times by a council member asking for the removal of posts from several years back. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Elise Mordos, Joseph Stein, and Laura Leidy.
Hi, I'm Elise Mordos. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm a resident of Boulder City. I'm here to ask each of you to vote against moving forward the consideration of a ceasefire resolution. First and foremost, statements calling for a ceasefire by city councils have had zero impact on the war and done nothing to unify the community and bring about peace. Looking here, the environment of Boulder's most recent city council meetings has become increasingly more hostile and toxic. Taking on this issue will only make it worse and create further fractions within the council and community. Moreover, it will also create a platform that would be used to fuel more antisemitism. As an example, I attended the Denver City Council meeting on Monday, during which the council voted against the ceasefire proclamation by a vote of eight to four. As I walked into the building, I was greeted by the chant "Resistance by Any Means." Five of us who spoke during the open comment and members of the council were interrupted an endless number of times for having differing views than those who favored the proclamation. Furthermore, my two friends and I were told that we were not welcome there. No one should talk to us. We received death stares, and were told that we were the wrong kind of Jews. Mind you that we sat there quietly and kept to ourselves. Ultimately, the environment was so hostile that we left the building via a back exit and escorted to our cars by police officers to avoid the angry mob gathering outside the chambers and building. This disruptive and mob-like behavior exhibited by the pro- ceasefire crowd here today and present in Denver City Council needs to stop. It's not safe for the community and is counterproductive in fostering unity and peace. Please do what you can to restore civility and keep the council focused on local issues. Vote against item A8. In addition, I have a little extra time. We just mentioned that this we should keep in the purviews of city council. I don't know how this would be within the purviews of city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Joseph Stein, Laura Leidy, and Scott Morlando.
Hello. Good evening, all. My name is Joseph Stein. I'm an almost lifelong resident of Boulder. I currently live in zip code 80305, and I'm here to urge council to pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Israel's war against the people of the Gaza Strip. As I have said before, speaking on the Boulder-Nablis City Sister Project, I stand before you here as a Jewish person of conscience invested in Jewish culture and community. I'm an eternal student of the Yiddish language. I'm a member of JFRED, though I don't speak on their behalf, a member of Jewish Voice for Peace, someone with deep connections to multiple parts of the Jewish world. I understand that council is highly unlikely to pass such a resolution. Hence, I come before you, not with any great hope for a resolution, but to urge everyone who may be listening now or in the future, who may be reading about this in any future publication, and especially our elected officials in the Senate and in the House of Representatives, if they may be reading about this, to do everything in their power to keep putting pressure on Colorado senators and representatives to end military aid to Israel, to call for a ceasefire, and for a weapons blockade against Israel to prevent the genocide, which, contrary to some claims we've heard here, is ongoing, as the ICJ has indicated is most likely the case. Please, if you can, join local efforts by the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center, the Boulder-Denver Jewish Voice for Peace, and the Colorado Palestine Coalition to call for peace and justice in Palestine. We must do everything in our power to ensure that the people of Gaza know that they are not alone in these terrible times, and to bring an end to Israel's genocide as soon as is humanly possible. We cannot bring back the dead, but we can fight like hell for the living. With my last 30 seconds, I can bring you something in Yiddish, the beginning of the partisan lead, zolk neit keinu al zdu geestem resten weg, chot shimlen blei ne farstel en bloe teig, kum in vet noch unser oes gebenkte shol, sveta poiktun unser trot, mir zeinen doll, as Paul Robeson translated, "Never say that you have reached the very end, though let in skies a bitter future may portend. For surely our promised hour will yet arrive, and our marching steps will thunder. We survive." I send this to the people of Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Laura Leidy, Scott Morlando, and Erin Brooks.
Thank you, Council. My name is Laura Leidy, and I live in Boulder. I'm calling for this council, a powerful representation of our community's voice, to pass a resolution supporting a ceasefire in Gaza, which includes the unhindered passage of aid into Gaza and the release of all Israeli hostages currently captured by Hamas and the arbitrarily detained Palestinians. This also includes an end to U.S. military funding for Israel that has been used to target and kill tens of thousands of innocent civilians today. You may be asking, why is this matter relevant to Boulder or to Colorado? Well, it's relevant because the unconditional military aid provided to Israel by the United States every single year deprives our community of money for our own local needs. Boulder residents' federal taxes are contributing over $1.5 million to Israel every year, which could instead fund our local needs, like the housing crisis. It's relevant because many members of our Boulder and our Colorado communities have family, friends, who live in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. At the beginning of this violence, a local Coloradan who's Palestinian told us at a gathering that he had lost dozens of his direct family members already. Can you even begin to fathom that amount of loss in your own family? And it's relevant because this city council, I truly do believe this, you have a powerful voice to represent our community. At least 48 other cities and counting across the U.S. have passed resolutions calling for a ceasefire. If this council's voice didn't hold power, would we be here collectively asking you? So I urge you to pass a resolution supporting a ceasefire to show our local and federal leaders that Boulder refuses to be silent in this matter, that when we mean "never again," we mean it for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Scott Morlando, Erin Brooks, and James Duncan. Is Scott here?
Scott's not here.
Okay. Not seeing Scott in the room, then we will now go to Erin Brooks and then James Duncan.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, members of the city council. Since October 7th, the Jewish community has experienced a troubling rise in antisemitism, and I stand before you to share the impact it has had on our daily lives. Just this past Monday at the Denver City Council meeting, I and two friends experienced firsthand the hostility and intimidation directed towards some Jews who dared to express their identity and support for Israel openly. As I proudly wore my dog tag, bearing the message "Bring Them Home Now," as well as my Star of David, I was immediately met when I sat down with vitriol and harassment. I was told I needed to leave. I was called a racist. I was accused of supporting a genocide, and I was labeled a bad Jew and not a real Jew simply for expressing my support for Israel's right to exist around my neck. After the council correctly voted not to adopt the adoption by a vote of eight to four amongst a very raucous, mob-like crowd, after conferring with the Denver police, they decided to escort us out of back entrance to our cars for our safety as a literal mob chanted outside. This is not the 1930s. This is 2024 Denver and Boulder, Colorado, and this is where I live. And enough is enough. We should not have to fear for our safety or face discrimination or antisemitism simply for expressing our identity and our support for a country that we love and that our families are from and are there and that they love. I commend the council for maintaining focus on local issues, as demonstrated by their recent commitment not to issue a resolution on the situation in Gaza. It is imperative that we prioritize the needs of our community and refrain from getting involved in conflicts thousands of miles away. Please make it clear once and for all that no matter how many times this small but loud minority demands it, you will not be making any resolutions related to this matter so you can get back to the issues of Boulder. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last three in-person speakers are James Duncan, Ellery Boyd, and Kristin Eller.
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much for your service. You know, I know Matt likes to start with a joke, right? And I have a joke too. Two minutes. Two minutes is a joke for us to be able to speak. I know that's not very funny, but that's my joke. On October 7th, I was doing what we normally do at the corner of Broadway and Canyon. For decades, we've been out there, anti-war, peace. And on October 7th, a young man walked up to me, and he said, "Are you happy? Are you happy?" I had no idea what he was like, because I don't pay attention to... I'm not into the mainstream news. I hadn't heard what happened, but I did find out. And I was devastated, right? And what we do on that corner is we do anti-war stuff. So I want to show you a couple of posters. This poster, "The Palestinian-Israeli Conflict: Illegally Occupied..." This is 20 years old. What's wrong with this sign? It says 63 years of illegal occupation. What's wrong with that sign? 63 years, all right? That's 15 years old. I've been trying to prevent October 7th. That's what I've been doing. My sign is this. You'll love it. Love, peace, honk, right? And on the other side is a news clearinghouse. And I had some other signs too. But what I want to do right now is finish with a poem. And if you'll allow me, I want to do it creatively. This is a poem by Tom Mayer, right? And it's way too long for me to read, right? So here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna read one stanza, and others are gonna read other stanzas, but we're all gonna finish with the line of the title of the poem, which is "Dismiss, Neglect, Ignore." Here we go, folks. "Caution is the motto of a prudent council team, avoiding any action..." No, I need you to speak up, please.
Right. Time's up. Time's up.
Dismiss, ignore.
James, your time is up. Please, please have a seat. James, please have a seat. All right, everybody be quiet, please. All right. Appreciate how people have been being very respectful of people's speech, so let's please continue that. We now have Ellery Boyd and then Kristin Eller.
Hello. Thank you all for being here. My name is Ellery Boyd, and I'm here to speak tonight in favor of the passage of a ceasefire resolution. As a Boulder resident and 21-year-old who is concerned about the future of our world and of our city, as we speak, the Israeli occupation forces are planning to execute a ground invasion of Rafah, the last so-called safe zone in Gaza, where over a million Palestinians are now sheltering. If it's not clear now, Israel is guilty of displacing almost all of Gaza's 2.3 million people from their homes and forcing them southwards under nonstop bombardment with the ultimate goal of ethnically cleansing the Gaza Strip of its native population. The result of this cruel and inhumane military operation is that 1% of all Palestinians in Gaza have been killed in the last four months. Horrifically, this genocide has taken place on our dime as U.S. citizens. As of yesterday, our senators, Michael Bennett and John Hickenlooper, have both signed onto a letter to President Biden calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. We are here today to ask that you follow suit. The letter which both senators signed stated, "Without the space created for regional diplomacy by a restored ceasefire, the political conditions for durable peace and security will remain unreachable. Over the past few weeks, we have been imploring you to take the lead as our local Colorado elected officials in calling for a ceasefire. Now, we are simply asking you to join our senators in acknowledging the will of the majority of your constituents by passing a ceasefire resolution here. In my government classes at Boulder High, I learned the importance of a representative democracy, a system which only works when you all, as our elected representatives, genuinely listen to and act upon the will of the majority. Take a look around this room tonight. Check your email inboxes and your voicemails, and I think it will become clear what the majority of your constituents are asking of you. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Our last in-person speaker is Kristin Eller.
All right. Hello, all. Yes.
All right. Hello, all. Yes. Like many of the other people.
Speak into the mic, please.
Thank you. Like many of the other people that have spoken, I'm asking you to move forward with the consideration of a ceasefire resolution. I realize that many of you don't want to hear about this. You're discussing whether to move forward so that you can vote no. That's why we, your constituents, won't stop coming to your meetings. You're hoping to vote no, so we'll stop. So we'll stop speaking at public comments, so you can stop listening. Now, many of you have cited, or probably will cite, that city councils shall not act on foreign policy or national policy issues. But as city council, you are our closest elected officials, meant to represent the people of Boulder, and the people of Boulder are asking you to hear them and represent their thoughts. Foreign policy or national issues are not outside your purview when your job is to represent your constituents, represent Boulder's views to the county, to the state, and to the nation. Staying silent, saying you won't consider declaring a ceasefire resolution, is saying you won't even consider representing the voices of your constituents. You have Palestinian constituents, you have Jewish constituents, and you have a growing coalition of constituents across backgrounds, ethnicities, and religions asking you to represent their voices. We will continue to grow, create a coalition of diverse voices and organizations to show you the support there is for a ceasefire resolution in Boulder. We will organize and we will do the work. All we're asking of you is to consider a ceasefire resolution. All we're asking of you is to represent these voices in Boulder by engaging. It's time to start engaging on foreign policy issues.
Thank you for your testimony. We have one remote person testifying, which is Mary Kornfeld. So if we could bring Mary online, please.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you to the honorable Boulder City Council members for the honor of addressing you today. My name is Mary Kornfeld. I'm the Director of Stand With Us here in Colorado. It's an international nonprofit dedicated to educating about Israel and fighting antisemitism. Firstly, I wanted to say that I love the opportunity to get to know you all as individuals. I know that you work very hard, and you're dealing with weeks of disruptions to your meetings due to the current war. I'm addressing you today as a Jew, a mother, a daughter, an activist, and a concerned Coloradan. I grew up here, born and raised, and have never seen the levels of antisemitism that exists today. I'm appalled and quite frankly scared. I've been following not only the atrocities that occurred in Israel on October 7th against innocent civilians, but I've been following the backlash that's resulted in rampant antisemitism here in Colorado as a result. I've been following the activities of the anti-Israel movements in Colorado, and their actions are nothing less than double standards and demonization of Israel and the Jewish people. And all of their messaging, anti-Israel movements you've been hearing from, have not said a word about the fact that Israel has found hostages being held in Rafa this past week, the city everyone is telling Israel not to go into. They've mentioned that there was a, they have not mentioned that there was a ceasefire on October 6th, and a ceasefire remains that Hamas, an internationally recognized terror organization, remains in power. Is that good for Palestinians or Israelis? They're not mentioning the massacre, the rape, the kidnapping, and the other atrocities that occurred on October 7th. I've not heard them recount the fact that early on October 7th, terrorists entered the home of Roian Smadaridon in Far Azza, a small community just miles from Gaza, and brutally murdered Roian Smadar in front of their youngest daughter, Abigail, who was subsequently kidnapped and held alone in the tunnels of Gaza. On the contrary, all that these anti-Israel movements have done since that horrific day is dehumanize Israelis and promote hate against the Jewish people. If city council is going to condemn anyone, it should be this despicable behavior. And if you're not willing to do that, at least reject their current campaign of hate and work to bring our community and our city together. Additionally, I'm really not sure what the purpose of foreign policy serves on our local city council when we have so many issues we need to deal with. This is not an us versus them. This is humanity versus terrorism. Please side with humanity.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks to everyone who spoke, and I really appreciate everyone attending here tonight, letting people have the chance to speak and being respectful while they gave their views. So thanks to all of you for doing that tonight. So that brings our open comment period to a close, and I'll just turn to our city manager and our city attorney to see if you have any responses to what we've heard tonight.
Not from me at this time. Thank you.
None from me, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone on council have anything that they would like to add? Mark?
What did you expect? Thank you, Mayor Brockett. However unlikely, I will at least attempt to be brief. During our last extremely raucous public comment period, a voice called out from the audience yelling, "You work for us." I've been thinking about that comment for the past two weeks and want to offer this response. Yes, we do work for you, but we do not work only for you. We also work for those who've been traumatized and made fearful by the antisemitism that's characterized too much of this debate. And we work for those who might have an entirely different viewpoint on this matter and have expressed their opposition to this request for a ceasefire resolution. But most importantly, we work for the vast majority of this community that wants us to address the many needs of Boulder and to do the job for which we campaigned and to which we were elected. They expect us to focus on homelessness, public safety, and providing adequate housing for those who live here. They expect us to maintain the natural environment that drew most of us to Boulder in the first place. They expect us to enact programs, to lift up the least fortunate among us, and to continue the policies that make Boulder a wonderful place to live. Recently, we had a substantive discussion on instituting sanctioned campgrounds. It was a wonderful example of what we have been sent here to do. We had a serious exchange on the economics of the proposal, its feasibility, the trade-offs we might have to make with other programs, and on and on. We were carrying out our responsibilities as we should, and no matter what the final outcome of that conversation, I was proud of my colleagues and proud to work among them. This is the work our community expects from us. They do not expect us to pontificate on foreign policy issues that are not within the scope of our duties or our competence, and they expect us to resist loud voices that insist that we do otherwise. Later tonight, I hope that we will fulfill that expectation and reaffirm that our obligation is to serve the people of Boulder and to work for the betterment of Boulder. And we will make that decision according to our best judgment and our conscience. Thank you.
Mark? Anybody else? Ryan?
Just wanted to say thank you to everybody for coming and being heard, and especially Ms. Dagny Flagden. I just love seeing younger folks here. I wish we had more of you.
Very good. Seeing no other hands. Oh, sorry, Taisha. Go ahead.
Wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I especially want to thank my fellow council members for staying engaged on this topic and listening to our community members and the many emails that we have received and phone calls that we have received from a cross-section of our community. I was honored to see that cross-section at the JCC on Monday, at the Standing Up Against Hate or Standing Against Hate, to see the Imam there, to see Dr. Rebaka, to see Marty from out Boulder, to see Jeremy at ADL. It was really important. That reminded me Auntie Madeline about what you shared about our differences and our similarities on that stage. And somebody said afterwards, when I was talking with them afterwards, they'd asked, so, you know, I asked them, "What'd you think?" And they said, you know, "I was hopeful for deeper conversation." And I said, "Take a look at that first flyer. Just getting to here was a miracle. Knowing that we were capable of ensuring that cross-section of perspective, of lived experience, of learned experience, of shared pain and anger and frustration, and the capacity to see through and past so that we can see our shared humanity was very powerful." I'm excited for, and I'm interested and eager for our discussion later on this topic with all of you. And again, just remember that if you want this for a local, our democracy is a muscle. Our community needs are going to ever change, and we need to be responsive to those needs. If you have expectations of certain behaviors, then you need to ask about those behaviors on the campaign trail to everybody you vote for all the time. If you want changed behavior, then vote for changed behavior. Don't sit up here now and then be mad, forgetting what they, everyone has been very transparent, very transparent in sitting in their integrity and their truth, and I honor that. I ask you again, let's work in the areas where we can and know that I'm eager for those deeper conversations, personally, professionally, and across. This is our community. Thank you for showing up today. And again, I look forward to deeper and deeper conversations individually and collectively with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Taisha. Last call. Seeing no other hands. That brings us fully to the end of the open comment period, and I just want to thank again everyone who came and spoke to us and for everyone of being respectful of the views that were offered here tonight. Appreciate all of your passion here. And we're now going to proceed with the rest of our agenda. So, Elisha, if we could move to the consent agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our consent agenda is item number three on tonight's agenda, and it consists of items 3A through E and through G, 3G through 3I.
Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Please. Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments?
I just wanted to just lift up the MOU with the tribal and the tribal agreements and just, again, I know that obviously, you know, relationship building over centuries is difficult, and so I honor that we can't go into the specifics of what is in that because of the confidentiality and the trust we're trying to rebuild. But I just wanted to thank the staff and thank our council members of, I just got here. So when I got here, I was like, "Whoa, we're doing this and that. Oh, my gosh!" So I just, this is one of those areas for me as well. When I say "we all belong," I mean that. And I just, it was exciting to see not only the work with open space that's coming up, but also just the opportunities in some of the other work that we're doing to really honor, respect, to atone, and some of that other stuff that's in that racial healing continuum that I'm still learning. So I just wanted to lift that up and say thank you to the staff. Thank you to the tribes. And I look forward, and I'm actually hopeful for anybody who's interested into a field trip. I went down to the Mountain Yoot Reservation when I was on the commission, and that was just a very, and not officially, and not to, but just to go to the bear dance and have dinner at the casino. And it was just a really wonderful time, and I still haven't been to the Southern Yoot, so I would love to do that. But again, it's really about showing up. Same thing with Rin River. And of course, continuing to find meaningful ways to invite them back to their homelands and through code management and all other kinds of things. So thank you.
Thanks for that, Taisha. I was going to bring that up as well. I appreciate you raising it because I just thought, I mentioned last year at the tribal consultation, we had two days of very detailed negotiations over the wording of this memorandum of understanding. And I remember at the end of that consultation, the joy that was in the room when we arrived at a consensus between all the tribal representatives and the city staff and our Boulder elected officials. And so really wonderful to see that come forward and be approved by our council tonight, and look forward to continuing to work with the tribes when representatives are visiting here next month as well. Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote, I believe. Elisha?
That is correct, sir. Thank you. We'll start the roll call vote for consent agenda items 3A through E and G through I with Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach.
Aye.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Councilmember Folkers.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
And Shuhar.
Yes.
The consent agenda items A through E and G through I are hereby approved unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, Elisha. If you can take us to our first matters item, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. First item under Matters from the City Manager, item number six on tonight's agenda, is 6A, and it is the update from Excel Energy.
Nuri, I'll turn to you to get us started.
Thank you so much. And today, I'm going to try to avoid preamble because I know we have a full day, and I'm going to send it right over to our Director of Climate Initiatives, Jonathan Cohen.
Thank you, Nuri. I appreciate it very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Jonathan Cohen. I'm honored to serve as the Director of the Climate Initiatives Department. Before we get to tonight's presentation, I wanted to offer just a few framing remarks, just about two minutes or so. So I think the council and much of the community that's watching tonight will remember that in 2020, the community voted to suspend our decade-old or decade-long attempt to municipalize our electric utility and instead focus on the partnership with Excel Energy. So the purpose of the partnership, of course, is for the city and Excel to work together to make our energy grid cleaner and more resilient, to make our buildings more efficient and use less gas, and launch initiatives that ensure all community members have equitable access to affordable energy. The partnership also provides a pathway to test and innovate and then scale a lot of the innovations so they have far-reaching impact outside of Boulder. So I really do want to stress the importance of the work. Based on our most recent analysis in our greenhouse gas inventory that was released just this past fall, building electricity and gas usage still contributes to the majority of Boulder's emissions. So how we work together to achieve Boulder's goals, both in terms of emissions and cost, has to continue to be a priority. So the agreement also includes provisions that set specific year-over-year statewide carbon emission reduction targets for Excel Energy between now and 2030. That's really a focus of tonight's presentation. So I really want to appreciate the work of our staff team, certainly Carolyn Elam, Matt Lerman, Alex Telashack, and Emily Sandoval. I particularly want to appreciate the work of the Boulder-Excel Community Advisory Panel. And before I step away from the mic, I want to appreciate our Excel colleagues for being here tonight. I know it's difficult to show up for these kind of conversations, but I honestly think this is really important for our community to hear directly from Excel on these types of issues. So staff is going to be here to answer any specific city questions, but tonight is really an opportunity for council to have a conversation with Excel. And so I will turn the mic over, I think, to Holly Velazquez-Horvath, one of my colleagues at Excel, and she's going to kick off the presentation. And like I said, we'll be here to answer any questions on the city side. Thanks.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and esteemed members of Boulder community. I am Holly Velazquez-Horvath. I'm the Regional Vice President of State Affairs and Community Relations for Excel Energy here in Colorado. I have been a part of the partnership since its inception, Jonathan and I, along with many others that are on staff and with a couple of our elected officials, negotiated and committed to that. I was along with Alice Jackson during that process. This evening, I stand before you as a representative of our company, but also continuing to be a committed partner of the partnership and also in working to meet the sustainability and innovation goals around delivering clean energy to our Boulder community. In 2022, the city of Boulder, Excel, made a decisive move by entering into the voter-approved energy partnership agreement along with the franchise. This was not just a contract that we understood. It was a commitment and a pledge to work hand-in-hand towards a future that is greener, cleaner, and more equitable. Today, we can confidently say that this partnership has been a catalyst for transformative change, particularly and most importantly, inside the company as we think about partnerships with our communities and our customers, and a testament to Boulder's foresight in choosing us as allies in this crucial endeavor that we all know is very important to this community. Our collaboration has set a new standard in the community-engaged environmental stewardship. Together, we have pursued very ambitious goals and continue to be dedicated to that. Those are focused on significantly reducing greenhouse gas emissions from our gas and our electricity generation, striving to eliminate electricity sector emissions with the bold aim of achieving 100% renewable energy by 2030, amplifying local renewable energy production, tapping into Boulder's rich potential for sustainable energy sources, ensuring that our energy systems are not only robust but also resilient and reliable, safeguarding our community against anything that's unpredictable, crafting solutions that resonate with every member of our diverse community, ensuring equity and accessibility are the forefront of our efforts. As we share updates tonight, remember that this partnership is a living and evolving collaboration every day. It's a journey we are on together. It's a journey we are on together and one where we each take steps forward in striding towards a future that aligns with the values and visions of the Boulder community. We are here as steadfast partners and continue to be committed to this journey, advocating on behalf of and alongside this community. So if we can go to the next slide. Go ahead, one more. Okay. Today, we will discuss our direction and our progress made in our first milestone of this partnership. The agenda includes addressing the gap between Excel Energy's target of reducing carbon emissions 85% by 2030 and Boulder's goal of 100% renewable zero emissions electricity by 2030, company vision, and just a quick update on the Colorado policy that we've been working on statewide with our legislative partners, GHG emissions overview, our clean energy plan, and our future direction and goals. Next slide. Next slide. In December 2018, we announced our goal for an 80% emissions reduction by 2030 and to achieve a carbon-free status on the electric system by 2050. We have also set industry-leading goals for gas and transportation, net-zero methane on our gas system by, net-zero methane on our system by 2050, a 25% total GHG emissions reduction by 2030, leading to net zero by 2050. Our transportation vision supports the transition to one out of every five vehicles being electric in our states by 2030, providing zero-carbon fuel accessibility to all of our customers by 2050. And Excel Energy is the first energy provider in the nation to announce comprehensive goals to deliver that net-zero energy across the electric, the heating, and also the transportation. Next slide. Significant policies under the Polis administration and in partnership with many stakeholders, including the City of Boulder, have driven sector-pacific emissions reductions. As you can see here, this is our evolution through a lot of different state policies that brought us here today. And it includes the 80% GHG reductions by 2030 on our electric and also delivering the clean energy by 2050. It also is helping us with the GHG emissions on our natural gas system, understanding that natural gas is a transitioned fuel that will deliver the reliability so long as we can get the technology to be 100% carbon-free on the electric system. And that is our Clean Heat Plan that was passed in '21. And then requiring, and then SB 1977, which is requiring transportation electrification plans every three years. We are currently being reviewed by the Public Utilities Commission on our second transportation electrification plan. And we are required to deliver those plans every three years in an advancement towards the electrification of the transportation system. Next slide. So with that, I am going to pass it to two of my colleagues. One of them you know, I think, very well, Ife Jennings. She's our area manager here in the City of Boulder. And Jack Ely, who is a partner of mine and is the Regional Vice President of Regulatory Policy here at Excel Energy in Colorado, who are going to delve deeper into the GHG targets that we currently have today and also our joint initiatives and vision for a sustainable future. I'll pass it to Jack.
Good evening, and thank you for letting us have the opportunity to speak with you.
Bring the mic up, please.
There we go. I'm a bit taller than Holly.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm not Ife. I'm Jack Ely, RVP of Regulatory Policy. Wanted to give you an update on the emissions trends that I'm proud to say that I've been helping the company put in place. And this was a big part of the settlement agreement or the franchise agreement that we forged with the City of Boulder in 2020. So, next slide, please. So, as Holly mentioned, this was House Bill 191261, set in place, a really important goal for the state of Colorado, which is a 50% greenhouse gas reduction target by 2030, economy-wide. So everybody, all the cities, Boulder and everyone else, and all the sectors there. What we're graphing here is 2005 emissions in the state, and then in 2030, where we need to get is the dark gray. What we're also showing is the contributions of Excel Energy across several components here. Both our power sector, which is the sort of a red hash that you're seeing there. The blue part of that is the transportation electrification plan. There's another small blue part. That's the Clean Heat Plan. But the message here is that the things that we're doing across our power sector, across our gas LDC sector, and then moving into the electrical, electric vehicle space and helping to reduce emissions in the transportation sector are roughly 40% of the total effort that the state needs to undertake to get to that 2030 targets. The red bar there is the contributions of other electric utilities, and then the light gray is other sectors' contributions toward that goal. But we're nearly half of the entire thing on our footprint. So, next slide, please. Under the Boulder Franchise Agreement, we put in place these targets that we negotiated with Boulder. And this was meant to get us on a pathway, and we were on a pathway, but Boulder wanted some safeguards to ensure that we continue on the pathway to continuing emissions reductions. Holly mentioned another critical piece of 2019 legislation, which required us to hit an 80% emissions target. And this closely followed on the heels of a 2018 goal where we, as a company, vowed to hit an 80% emissions reduction target on our power sector. So we have a gas sector. We have a power sector. We vowed to hit 80% on our power sector. And I'm happy to say we're well on the pathway to meet and exceed that. But these interim targets are what were placed into the Boulder Franchise Agreement, 2022, 2024, '27, and 2030. These are associated with the generation that we either own or we have contracts or otherwise purchased from other providers. So the emissions are accounted for on a holistic basis, whether we own the generation or it's a third-party owner of the generation. It represents all the generation coming to supply power to Boulder, as well as our entire system. This is based on accounting systems established by what's called the Climate Registry and is consistent with EPA reporting. These targets, I want to note, were set on some 2019 forecasts because there's a couple of bumps on the road here that I'm about to tell you about. But this was established in 2020 based on our best forecasting in 2019. So, next slide, please. The 2022 emissions, we, so we have achieved, by 2022, we've reduced our emissions about 50% relative to 2005 levels. So it's a tremendous amount of progress. We expect that to be about 86, 87% by 2030. So we're on a trajectory, and I'll show you that in a minute. We are slightly over at this point in 2022. These targets aren't, the data is not fully vetted at this point. We have to work with the Climate Registry. That tends to take one to two years to get fully vetted. So we're about 300, sorry, 300,000 tons over the target, which is less than 2%. So we wanted to be very transparent, even though the data is not finalized. We wanted to let the city and the community know that we're over that target slightly. Next slide, please. So this is showing the trajectory, and you can see this starts way back in 2005, and that's how these targets were established, is relative to 2005 levels. And you can see the trajectory we're on and where we're going. The blue, so the red line is actual history to this point. The blue line is our current projection based on currently approved plans, and we just updated those plans. In fact, just within the last two to three weeks, Public Utilities Commission updated or approved our latest generation resource plan, which is making a really big stride, and you can kind of see the effect of that on the slope of that blue line. The green line establishes what the Boulder Agreement set forth. So let me, let me jump to the next slide, please, and then we'll talk in a little bit more detail where we are with that. As I mentioned, in 2022, we're probably slightly over. I'd say that's probably a 98% to 99% accurate prediction at this point. So very, very small over, very valid to ask why. Energy sales were up more than we thought they were going to be across our system. And I should note, this is a system-wide emissions look. This isn't, this isn't solely, sorry, the emissions to serve Boulder. It's across the entire Excel Energy footprint in Colorado. So it's subject to all the things that we are subject to to run our system. So, electric demand was up. We had supply chain problems that caused some of the clean generation to come on a little bit later, either not in 2022 or in the following year. We had a little bit more gas generation because we have to, we do have to meet that need reliably. We have to meet every megawatt hour that's sought from us, and it did come in a little bit higher. So that's 2022. We'll, we'll report back to you when that data is finalized. We're hoping in the first, first few months here of 2024, that that third-party piece is a little bit out of our hands. Also wanted to show you in 2024, we are projecting that we may be slightly over there. Some of the same trends apply here. And also what we've been observing is that the demand that we're seeing through electric vehicles, through beneficial electrification, it was greater than we thought. I was trying to emphasize early, we built all these targets off a 2019 forecast. Our forecasting now is seeing that demand increasing more. And again, 2024 obviously is just getting underway. It'll be a long time, you know, a year or two before we'll have a good sort of look at that data. But we wanted to be very transparent about how things do look in 2024 because it is an accurate statement to say that we're probably over 2022, and there's risks that we'll go over in 2024. So that's the bad news. The good news is 2027 and 2030 are very, very much exceeding what we projected that we would hit in that franchise agreement. It's about three to four million tons in 2027, about three million tons extra in 2030. We're targeting about 85% to 87% emissions reduction in 2030. That was, that's compared to the 80% goal we set for ourselves, and that's compared to the 6.9 million tons that we established in the franchise agreement. So we're feeling really good about that, and the reason why is kind of a simple factor of how the franchise, of timing, really, and planning. When we set those targets in the franchise agreement, we had very limited degrees of control over the planning of our system. And the system, the system emissions is largely an outcome of the planning process. Our plan was set by the commission in 2018, by the Public Utilities Commission in 2018. So we have been implementing that plan ever since then. Those last generators just came online last summer, the two, there were two solar plus storage facilities. So you do see it sloping down still. But we had kind of limited degrees of control over the 2022 and 24 achievements at that time. By contrast, since we forged the franchise agreement in 2020, we had a lot of ability to influence that. We could work with the City of Boulder in the commission process. It's called a resource planning process. And that's where we go to the commission and talk to them and propose plans about how we will propose new generation. And so we have a settlement agreement that commits to very similar targets. In fact, they were kind of emulating the Boulder Agreement of 2022, 2024, '27, and 2030. That was forged into a settlement agreement with about 15 to 18 parties on that that agreed to those very similar targets to what the City of Boulder initiated in the franchise agreement. So that kind of became more broadly accepted and more broadly adopted about two years later. And then the commission approved it just, just in January. So we have a wholly new plan. We actually have a whole new forecasting model, which was brought in to help us forecast renewables better because that was one thing we discovered, our modeling was over forecasting renewables a bit. We have more accurate modeling now. So we're feeling very good about that. We have, you know, a better, a more broad, more broad-spread commitment. We have higher, we have the ability that we planned into this plan. It's approved by the commission now. We're going to go off and execute. There's a huge transmission project that we initiated as part of that plan in 2021. We already have shovels in the ground. Execution's going very well on that. So we're expecting we're going to greatly exceed '27 and 2030. So wanted to let you know where we're at with respect to that target, with respect to those targets because it was a big commitment in the franchise agreement. So, next slide, please. I was, and one more, if you would. I was going to talk about this plan just a little bit here. We just, again, we got this approved. This plan was after about two to three years of litigation, a bidding process that we went through. Very exciting plan, I think. We're building in about 6,000 megawatts of new generation into the system. To give you some context, our system peaks at about 7,000 megawatts. So this is a huge wholesale transition. The plan is taking all of our coal units offline by the end of 2030, so they will all be out of our system. It's retiring some gas on the system. It's bringing in really unprecedented amounts of clean energy on the system here. I won't read all the numbers, but you can see like the vast majority of this, about 90% on a megawatt-hour basis, is either wind, solar, or storage, or some combination of the two. We're getting these interesting hybrids of solar plus storage, which represent a big swath of the new resources. There is about 10%, 10% of this is new natural gas facilities that we're bringing in to ensure the reliability as all the firm capacity from coal is going offline and some gas is retiring as well. But a lot more gas is retiring than we're actually bringing online. It also runs very little. So, and I want to show you on the next graph, the, on the next slide, please, what the net energy is. So to be clear, this is, this is the energy production from all of the existing fleet plus the new plan. And 2024, we're roughly half renewable energy will be with that by the end of the year. You see that progressing to where we're about over 80% renewable energy by 2030. The gas stays very consistent in, across that, across that swath. The coal you do see is shrinking. That's a dramatic change on these pie figures where the coal is shrinking from 33% to 4%. If we had a 2031 graph on there, the coal would not show up because it would be gone. So that is underpinning the emissions, and that's why we're very confident about those emissions trends because coal is very intense in terms of the carbon emissions loading per megawatt hour. It's about two to one compared to natural gas. So when the coal goes away, we have a very good sense of how much the emissions are going to go down. So just wanted to give you that overview on where we're sitting with the targets, our currently approved plan, the execution of the last resource plan, which has been successful. It's now largely complete. We're just beginning the execution of the next one, and things are, things are tracking very well for the next two targets. So, and with that, I think I'll turn it to Ife Jennings.
Good evening. My name is Ife Jennings, and I work at Excel Energy and Community Local Government Affairs, and I have the honor of serving the Boulder community. Next slide, please. Next slide. So today I just want to give a quick overview of the partnership and the work that we're doing collectively to help the City of Boulder reach its climate goals. Holly and Jack talked briefly about, you know, our system will be at 85% by 2030, and we know that the City of Boulder's goal is to get to 100% by 2030. And so in the partnership agreement, we took the, the work to really identify what was the gap in that and how do we quantify that and then have projects and a work plan that really looks at closing that gap and how do we focus more on that. Next slide, please. So here's what we, what came out of the partnership overview document. And you'll see that there's two areas there for the focus areas. There is the light blue area that are projects and focus areas that folks focus completely on reducing greenhouse gas emissions as we do work here in the City of Boulder. And then in the tan section is really looking at how do we eliminate the electric sector emissions? And those are the projects that are focused in each of those areas. Next slide, please. So to date, what we wanted to do is just give you a quick overview of what we feel are our accomplishments to date and what we've been working on. So the first will be looking at our solar energy legislation and looking at how we successfully worked together to pass Senate Bill 21261, which really enhanced our effort around solar energy adoption. The second one is that emission gap analysis that I spoke to you just a few minutes ago about. And that was when we started to quantify what really is the number for closing the gap between the difference in our numbers in 2030 with the 85% and 100%. And then next was our strategic plan, and that's the two-year work plan that we'll focus on, on projects that are specific to closing that gap. In addition to that, we have our undergrounding projects that are happening with a completed undergrounding project on North Broadway, the 19th Street. And it's really around projects that we're doing collaboratively with the city through transportation projects as well. And then, you know, our team worked on, we heard a lot about the community of wanting more undergrounding options. And so we worked on a how-to undergrounding guide for communities that wanted to go into partnership to underground their facilities in their area. In addition to looking at how do we address reliability in the north and south region of Boulder? And so I'll tell you a little bit about that more here in a moment. And looking at developing our 2022 Electric Mobility Plan and initiating the Clean Heat Plan that really looks at how do we look at non-pipeline alternatives to bringing on more gas infrastructure? But what are some of the electrification projects we can do here locally? And focusing on the innovation solutions to be able to do that. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. The undergrounding projects that we spoke about is currently, and the money that we've spent on those would be our North Broadway, 19th Street. And we're in the process of doing one on Arapahoe as well. In addition to that, we're looking at the Chautauqua area, and we're doing a phased approach to undergrounding all our dry utility facilities in the Chautauqua area with undergrounding 99 residential and commercial services for undergrounding. And we're doing that in a partnership with the Chautauqua Association, the City of Boulder, the Historic District Park, and the community as well. After we get through the undergrounding process, we will take a deeper look at other sustainability and resiliency projects that we can do there as far as electrification and solar access. Next slide, please. In addition to that, reliability was something that we've heard from the community that we really wanted to focus on. So we are also evaluating battery storage projects that we can do here locally for critical infrastructures within the City of Boulder. And so our team is looking at ways to do that. I spoke briefly about the North and South Broadway project, where we are, where we did the work order to address vegetation management and looping the system so that we would experience a minimum amount of outages. And I'm happy to report that based on that work, we haven't had any additional customer complaints or the city hasn't received any additional support about outages in that area. In addition to our wildfire mitigation work, it's something that we take very seriously, and we continue to do across all of our communities, but specifically in the City of Boulder, where we're working to harden our system and use detection cameras with the panel system, camera system that we executed here in the City of Boulder, Boulder County as a pilot project before we did it in all our other communities. And it really was a way to be able to keep a watchful eye on where we're seeing potentials for wildfires. Next slide, please. In addition to that, we talk a lot about new programs and innovation. And so a part of that is looking at, not only how we close the gap, but a project that was brought forward by Matt Lerman, who was also a staff member here, is the zero emission communities. And it really is looking at how do we continue to close the gap from an incremental standpoint with a utility scale program? And so with that, it basically means that communities could opt in to a program where they would purchase incremental utility scale renewable generation on their system to get to their one hundred percent goal faster. And so what you see here is a timeline on where we are with working with that project. It really came out of our electric resource plan. And where we're looking at continuing to have community discussions and product development. So we did a lot of modeling, which means we looked at what are the resources that would be needed for the City of Boulder to close the gap, and potentially now looking at projects that would meet that need. And so you'll see more of that coming forward in filings that are happening throughout this year with our either just transition plan, which is what we do when we're working on in communities about closing our coal plants. And what does that plan look like for us to help those communities, not only with property taxes, but workforce development as well? But also, if it's not in that plan, then there will be a separate application. And so we look forward to updating council on when that happens. Next slide, please. In addition, we just recently put together a concept paper that we're working on together with the Department of Energy Funding Grant. And this is around virtual power plants. And so we're really excited about the opportunity to explore that pilot project here locally in Boulder. Next slide. And lastly, our transportation electrification work is really looking at how do we help advance the City of Boulder's goals with having thirty percent of zero emission vehicles on the road by 2030? And so the projects that we're doing around that is looking at our Innovation Fund grant funding, which is a part of the, the transportation electrification plan. And so locally, we've distributed over two million dollars here in the City of Boulder to help with that. With, and that takes up about seventeen percent of the total fund of how it was being allocated. And it looks at, and the way we've invested that is through our investment in eco-friendly vehicles and infrastructure here in the City of Boulder, as well as working with a parent, a peer-to-transit company, adding additional Ford vehicles, as well as infrastructure to help support those vehicles, and then expanding a car share program that's here locally, and that's increasing their fleet size by fifty percent with the funding that they received from this program, and enhancing their operational capacity so that they could grow with the addition to the fifty percent. There are three additional projects that are coming up this year that continue to support that. That's the Thirtieth and Pearl Bi-Directional Charging Program. And it really is looking at how do we test the ability of bi-directional EV charging paired with car shares to reduce the overall demand on multifamily buildings? And then there's the fleet infrastructure to support the infrastructure for the growing number of fleets that the city will have. In addition to multifamily, evaluating opportunities for adding additional, six additional infrastructures to affordable housing buildings here in the City of Boulder. Next. So that wraps up our discussion and our presentation tonight to council. We welcome any questions that you have this evening.
Great. Thanks so much, Ife and Jack and Holly. Really appreciate you being here with us tonight and talking about progress that is being made. I'll turn to council members to see if there are any questions for our Excel representatives who are here with us tonight. I can get us started. Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
All right. Let's move right off the bat. Here we go. First, thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. It's always.
Sure, Michael.
It's always great to get these updates and hear where Excel is. And it certainly, you know, now that we're back in franchise with each other, you know, having this collaboration is nice for us to check in on. I first want to just appreciate council member Shu Hart's questions. I thought they were really nice, and I appreciate him getting out. I had some of those similar questions. But to the presentation, one thing I wanted to ask a little is, I've got really three questions. You know, if demand sort of drove down the emissions or drove the emissions higher than expected in 2022, 2024, and I know that there's some new modeling, I'm just kind of wondering, like, what are the specific capital investments or decommissioning that's planned in order to overcome that trend in your model to then allow you guys to dip below our, you know, our goals? And so I'm just sort of wondering, what can the community look forward to in terms of new infrastructure and/or decommissioning of things to get us back on track?
Sure. I will invite Jack to come up and help with a portion of that.
Thank you for the question. Really, that, that graph was trying to show that the future of the generation fleet is going to greatly get underneath the targets that Boulder has. So our plans right now are doing that. They are incorporating higher degrees of demand that we're seeing from electric, electric vehicle adoption in particular. We're starting to see an earlier trend with electrified heating in homes as well. So we build that into the forecasts. That becomes part of the planning. And we're, you know, that last target, it was three point, we were expecting to hit three point nine million tons, and the target was six point nine. So we should be way, way under the target. But I'm not sure if I'm totally getting to your question.
Well, and maybe it's not here, but I think, you know, sometimes shiny objects are a great thing. And so knowing what are those, what are those? How big are they? Are they solar? Are they storage? Are they wind? I mean, it's important for us to sort of know where our investment in the rate base is going. And sometimes pointing to like, hey, that thing we're building is, is what's driving that. That other thing we're building, that thing we're decommissioning is what's getting us there. So maybe that's not here, but in general, that, that would be helpful for us. And I think community to know what their investment in Excel returns them, and they know the thing.
Okay, fair, fair enough. And we can provide more detail. We kind of aggregated the generation up to nerd level of resource planning.
I can respect that.
I can tell you in 2022, the end of 2022, one of the coal units in Pueblo retired at the end of 2022. Another one will retire at the end of 2025. So those are some of the pieces going away. Ife probably knows more about the local investment here. What we brought online recently was the two, really the two first large-scale solar plus storage projects. Those are also in the Pueblo area. Those came online in the summer of 2023. It was several hundred megawatts. It was a very large addition. So our operators are now working with very large batteries for the first time ever. Not just, that was just this year. So those things are starting to happen. We brought, yeah, there's, there's, there's always a lot going on. This is a slightly quiet period right now, because we're ending that implementation on that plan. And then we'll go into the implementation of the new plan that just got approved two weeks ago. You'll hear us talk about those pieces coming online for probably the next four years.
Wonderful. I'll just say, I mean.
But we can get you unit specifics and gory details.
Yeah, I mean, just really, I mean, at the big level, we've all been, we were all present for some of the, the last decade, when there was tension between community and Excel. And I think there's a chance for us to sort of over-communicate what that partnership and what that investment is bringing to this community. And so I think that's, that's on us, but I think it's also an opportunity for Excel and all of our partners to kind of just really put it all on the table, in a, in a good way. So I appreciate the work you're doing. I just would like to plug that for, for community to know where that.
Sounds great. Happy to get more information. We have a lot more.
Thank you. Along those lines, I just have two other questions. Is, kind of, do you guys, I love the projections you have in terms of where reductions are going in generation. Do you have any projections on kind of rate-based projections? Because I think there's a lot of concerns that if we're investing in cleaner, cheaper energy, that at some point, our rates should maybe flatline, certainly maybe decrease at some point. So I'm just wondering, is there a sense of when we might see that? Or how we work with that with regards to our community, understanding what the investments are upfront on capital? But when do those returns on investment in clean energy start to maybe bend the curve on, on that rate base perhaps?
Yeah, and I'll start answering that, and then we'll welcome either Jack or Holly, unless you had something right away. Okay. So I, I think, you know, as it's all projected, as you said, right, on how we're forecasting and the infrastructure that's needed in order to, to re, put those things in place, right? And so I think it, it will become apparent in the next couple of years of what we see as far as rate decreases for our customers. But it, it will be an ongoing thing that we'll continue to monitor. And we're definitely dedicated to making sure that we keep affordable prices for our customers and looking at them more closely as we do that, and partnering with Energy Outreach, you know, Colorado, and different organizations to make sure that we're providing affordable costs for all of our, our customers as well. Jack, I don't know if you had anything else to add to that?
It's a tough question, because I understand the expectation. On, I'd say, so our system on the electric side.
Get the microphone up, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry. On the electric side, there's three major areas. There's generation, transmission, distribution. The generation, you're right, there's, there's a, there's a really exciting trend about renewables. It's, it's an amazing story about cost effectiveness, costs coming down. We can replace a lot of the existing generation with renewable generation at either neutral costs and sometimes saving costs. We call it steel for fuel. We can save having to charge customers for fuel, which we don't earn a single dime on. And we can, we can do it with renewables, and that's better for everybody. On the transmission and distribution side, we haven't seen that type of cost decrease. In fact, we're seeing cost increases, and that's something we're really trying to get our arms around. I mean, we all listen to, read news, listen to the news. And what do you hear about for the last two to five years? Inflation. So transmission has gotten more expensive, distribution has gotten more expensive. In the net, netting all these things together, what we're trying to do is keep the rates within an inflation-type number, or less than inflation-type number. There's a lot more focus on that going forward. And we're also asked to do different things and new things, like wildfire mitigation. That was a whole new area that we have to invest in. The things we have to do on the distribution system are more sophisticated. With, you know, electrifying vehicles, electrifying heating. It calls for more things that we need to do on the distribution grid. So again, like, we're trying to keep it all within that, that kind of inflation-type of increase metric. But it's going to be a really active conversation, especially at the PUC. So we'll have a lot more to say about that.
Appreciate that. My final question was sort of alluded to. And this, and this might be a naive one on me, because maybe they're out there, but it, something. I own an electric vehicle, and so I sort of curious, as we increase the load and demand of charging, current habit is to plug them in at night.
Yeah.
It's when our least efficient and least environmentally friendly energy is being generated, of course. So the question I have is, is how, is, are there plans to create incentives to flip that behavior so that we can start to drive daytime charging in different ways? So we're leveraging when we're maybe at peak, climate-friendly and green energy generation to charge our EVs rather than having a surge of a load when we'd expect to actually be down when we're maybe our dirtiest in terms of what's on the grid?
Yes. We have programs now, there's, well, there's two or three answers to that. So we do have time-of-use pricing, which is emphasizing different, it, it, it's asking you not to charge from one to seven PM currently, especially three to seven PM. The time-of-use pricing is very likely to shift farther into the evening, probably six to nine PM. That's what the Public Utilities Commission is, is kind of observing. And we're observing the data, too. We tend to see that as well. What we didn't show in the data too clearly, when I was, when I looked back at, when we, so when we formed the franchise agreement in 2020, we had three percent solar. We've tripled that today. And it's, so fourteen percent in 2024 is what it'll be. And it'll be something like twenty-four percent in 2030. So that profile solar on the system has changed it very fast. And our time-of-use pricing is probably a little bit behind that. And then we're working through those processes with the commission to do that. But for specifically, that, that sends a price signal to customers, and the price signal is pretty closely tied to renewable generation. So there's a nice confluence of, you know, encouraging renewables, reducing curtailment, reducing emissions, reducing costs. They generally line up, not perfectly. But for electric vehicles now, we have managed charging programs. We have two. One is called Charging Perks. One's called Optimize Your Charge. If you're not in those, we want you in those. And they're seeking to encourage you to charge when it's more beneficial to the system, generally when emissions are lower. So, so the answer is yes. We're trying to get more and more people into those programs. If you're not in it, we pay you to be in those programs. So we want to encourage. There's literally a, like a rebate check you get to enroll in those. So if you're not in it, talk to Ife.
I'll corner out of my eye over Jonathan Cohen to say, hey, we can evangelize that more within our community. So awesome. But thanks for bringing that to our attention. That's something I think we'd love to continue to evangelize, because it sounds like a good program to change habits. So appreciate. That's all my questions. Thank you for fielding those.
Other questions? Nicole?
Thanks. And I will just direct you, my colleague Matt, to study, actually. This is something Excel has been looking at, this charging behavior, for over a decade. And I know, because I worked on a study when I was at the Renewable and Sustainable Energy Institute, where we were looking at how this time-of-use pricing impacts vehicle charging behaviors. And so I think just, just a kudos to you for kind of having the foresight to be looking at that over a decade ago and thinking about how we can use that. So yes, the time-of-use pricing does matter, and I can get you a paper on it if you're interested. So, and I just wanted to thank you as well for the presentation, for all this information. You know, it's always, it's always nicer when we see things hitting their targets. And I just want to celebrate. This is a pretty big switch in a pretty short period of time. And I think it is quite impressive. And I want to call out, too, I see a lot of the folks in the room who've been fighting for this for decades, too. Thank you for all the work to kind of work with Excel and really move us toward decarbonization. I had a couple of questions that are really sort of focused on data and what data is available for us to, to see. So one of the things that I hear a lot is that people really are struggling to pay their utility bills. And, you know, as we move farther into this climate emergency, it really does become kind of a human right to have energy. So is there, is there anything we can get on data around how you're working with community, connections you're having with community around households that are being reached by some of the energy assistance programs that are helping people afford their bills? Because I know you're doing work trying to get out to our community members, make sure they're aware of this. Is there anything, can we get an update? Like, what percentage of households are, you know, are connecting with these programs? You know, what are the targets that you're looking to reach in terms of energy assistance over the next five, 10 years, too?
Yeah, absolutely. We can provide an update to council about the programs that we have. And I know I've talked to a few of you about the Red Truck Program, which is a resource-delivered educate, resource education-delivered program. And it really is our community, our customer service reps going out to the community and meeting people where they are, coming outside of our four walls to talk to them more about their bills and rebates and energy efficiency programs that we have available to them. In addition to that, we recently signed a contract with the Latino Community Foundation of Colorado. And what they're going to help us do is, is provide these energy ambassadors and working in underserved populations so that we're able to reach those that maybe who traditionally haven't had the seat at a, at the table for discussions like this. And be able to educate them and really learn how do we best meet the needs of that community and programs that we need to develop in order to do that. So in the first quarter, what they'll be doing is recruiting in each of our community's ambassadors to, to work with us on those programs and reaching those individuals in that community as well.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I think those are kind of this, I would love to see those as we move on in the years of what, what are, what are the targets you're trying to, to reach in terms of percentage of households receiving assistance that you've reached out to? And then where are you at in, in meeting those goals? I would, I would love to see that in the future. And then the other question that I have is really around, it's again a data question and what we can get access to. And it's really around hardening. So how can our residents and businesses know whether they're in an area that's been hardened? How much of our city is kind of set up to be resilient in the face of some of the climate challenges? The hotter, drier, more wildfire, more flood-prone climate that we're heading into? How do they know if they need to, you know, be concerned or not? I think having some data around that would be really helpful, too. Where are we as a city? Are we twenty percent hardened? Are we sixty percent? When can we expect to get to a hundred percent? And then also thinking about how the electricity is transmitted to Boulder. Because it's not, it's, we don't, we don't have sort of the microgrids and things that could help us be a little bit more resilient on a local level. We've got energy coming in. And how do we know if that's protected and how much is protected? So I would be curious, you know, to hear a little bit about that now, but also for coming back to us in the future. I would love to have some of this information, because I feel like that's critical for our community to know. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot there, and I think we should probably take that.
I'm sorry. There's, that's a pretty technical question on the grid. So we should probably take that back and come back to the city council. There are a couple of things that are underway that lead to more data. There's something called distribution system planning, which we built the first one in 2022. The next one will be November of this year. That, the first one is always kind of, you know, you're finding your way. The next one will be more evolved, should have more of that data. On the transmission. On the transmission side, and we continue to have a pretty good reliability rate on transmission and generation. We're generally better-than-average performer on electric reliability performance. So we probably need to talk a little bit about what what how you define hardened or not as well. So it's probably a dialogue we can continue in the future.
Great, thank you. And just just one final question, and this is another request for data. One of the concerns that I hear from folks in the community is around the the large profits that Excel has as a for-profit company, as a monopoly in our state with regard to energy. And is there any way that we can get some information on how the profits are coming back into our community, are being kind of reinvested? Like, what percentage are coming back to us of the money that our residents are paying in their energy bills? What's coming back to us that is going into the infrastructure hardening, the kind of climate-resilient systems, the energy assistance programs, that sort of thing? I feel like that would be a really wonderful data point to have for the community and just to help them understand that the ways that we're partnering to make sure that people are getting access to the clean energy, renewable energy we need in sustainable and equitable ways.
Absolutely. We can follow up that information.
Something? Go ahead, and then Tina.
For those of us who lived through this negotiation, it was a pretty hard-fought discussion and an emotional conversation within the community as to whether or not to continue our efforts to municipalize versus entering into a partnership with Excel. And and so when you say that you've you've kind of missed the goals in 2022, it's it's yes, it's a very small amount, and you're going to you project that you're going to miss the goals again in '24 by a little bit larger amount. That's going to get some people a little bit excited. And I understand that you have projections for '27 and '30 that are more favorable, but it looks a little bit like we're kicking the can down the road and and saying, all right, we're not meeting our goals now, but just wait, we we will. And and that takes a little bit of a leap of faith. So I'm wondering, is there anything you can do to accelerate your efforts to try to meet those 24 goals as opposed to simply saying, you know, trust us, we'll we'll do better in '27, and we'll do really well in '30, and and, you know, for those of you who are going to still be around in in 2050, we're going to do just great. And I I make that comment only in in light of the fact that this was such a a fraught conversation within the community, and, you know, I'd like to get a response on 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 that issue if you could.
Okay. Yeah, I I appreciate the question. We anticipated it. Couple things, I guess. 2024, as I said, is a little bit of a quiet period, and I I do want to emphasize, after you have an established resource plan, there's a limited degree of things you can do to influence the outcome, because once you have your system, then you're then you operate the system you have. And when you're operating the system, it's what we sometimes call a reliability-constrained economic dispatch. So you've got to dispatch for reliability first, and then you look very closely at economics. And then the third piece of that is emissions. So our operators have very limited agree ability to control that without sort of compromising one of the other two factors, and it's always those three. So 2024, I don't know if there's a whole lot we can do because we don't have any new resources coming online. There's not much leaving the system either. We're really sort of like right in a lull between the plans in in 2024. We'll keep you updated as far as the status on the progress in 2024. We always try to see what we can do to reduce emissions. Hopefully, you can see on that graph, we've had steady progress really every single year. We were down a million tons last year, so the the trajectory is, I'd say it's nation-leading. Still not hitting the targets, totally own that. Wanting to be transparent and clear with this community about that right now. And we have learned a lot about forecasting renewables and demand really since 2019. So I don't know if there's a specific thing we can promise right now. We'll take that back and see what can be done.
Just as a as an example, would you be prepared to accelerate the undergrounding effort in some fashion so that when people are harassing me at council and and saying, see, I told you, you know, they weren't going to meet their goals? I can say, well, they made a good faith effort to do so, but they are also doing this, which is helping our community greatly.
I felt like I had to come up here and help Jack and Ife out a little bit with this one. So just to reiterate two things. One is that even though we say '27, trust us, '20, '30, trust us, we're not kicking the goal line. And those firm 17 projects that were recently approved by the Public Utilities Commission through our approved electric resource plan is what we have a responsibility to not only the community but to the state to deliver on by 2030, and those are approved. So we are now, and we've got bids in, those are hard bids, those are hard projects, and all of that generation of those 17 projects is committed. We also, through that electric resource plan, have a commitment that we have to retire Hayden Comanche Coal Plant up in Route County by 2028. We have to retire our brush coal plant and transition it to natural gas for the reliability, and that we are required to retire Comanche Unit 3 down in Pueblo by the end of 2030. So those are all hard plans that we we can't go back on. They're committed, and we're we're on our way. I also wanted to say that along with those GHG emission targets, when we established this partnership back in 2020 and we spent the summer listening to the community, talking with the city, talking with the elected officials, the partnership was bigger than what we were doing on our electric system and delivering that clean energy. And that was doubling down the commitment on what are we doing to ensure that, you know, we stay open to delivering what the City of Boulder wants? The Zero Community Emission Project, that is strictly coming from Matt and the City of Boulder and saying, would you look at this? And we brought it back. We've worked on it the last couple of years with the city, and that is potentially going to be proposed as a new concept, something we've never done before, that will deliver that additional renewable energy that we can't meet your or our we can't meet your specific community targets? That is a commitment that we are making to file that in June. That's one. The Chautauqua Undergrounding Project, that was that came straight out of the community and asking us to really look at that and spend the time, and that's a really complex electric distribution system with a lot of service laterals. The infrastructure is really old. We have barely any space to underground some of that distribution. But as you can see from Ife's update, we have been steadfast and continue to commit to making sure that we are delivering on that commitment. So just to, we will, you know, continue to double down and make sure that we are delivering on those commitments and anything more that the community wants. And I just want to reiterate that 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 partnership is bigger than what we're doing.
I I just want to urge you to think about the fact that we have substantial areas in this city that are located within the wildlife urban interface, and undergrounding there is a very important part of creating a resilient and fire-resistant community, and I hope you'll think about that.
Thank you.
You don't need one, but Ryan, you got one?
Ife and Jack, thank you for being here and for the great presentation and also your other written responses to the hotline memo that I wrote. And to clarify, those were questions from the community. I wish that my questions were as good as those. Councilmember Benjamin makes a good point. I think that the public and I think most experts believe that in general renewable energy technologies should be bringing costs down over time. And so just a comment to think about, which is, I do think our residents of Boulder has an interest in the the view of their monopoly energy provider about when that might happen or I guess that that whether that is true. And then, secondly, what is the compact for profit sharing in that reduction of costs? So I don't ask you to answer that now, but I just think that's a kind of a big question that is on on people's minds. I have two questions. The first one is on rate-basing coal. When will rate-basing of coal end? I think, is it 2030? Is that basically the year with the with the coal plants winding down?
Yes and no. So the last plant retires in 2030. There is a finance mechanism to pick up the remaining book value on that plant, and it's called securitization, so it takes that plant off of the rate base. It turns it into debt finance, which is really, we're just financing at the cost of debt that we incur to finance. So it takes the equity return off of that plant in 2030.
Okay, so more or less 2030?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And then my my only other question is on the subject of community questions. I I've heard residents ask me, do we really want to electrify our our home? Won't that reduce the reliability on the on the end of Excel? Are they going to be able to handle it when we have more people going to electrify and then with more EVs? Is this something that they should be worried about, that Excel won't be able to manage the grid if they go to an all-electric home with 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 no other energy systems?
We're fully planning to handle it. It's it's built into plans for the electrification, the sorry, vehicle electrification plans we bring to the commission. We also have advanced clean heat plan, which has electrification of heating in it, and we already had that happening anyway under DSM Plan. So but it speaks directly to the challenge on the distribution grid. I want to be very open with you about that. We've seen the distribution grid is is getting a lot of challenges on it right now, and that's why, to your earlier question, which wasn't your question necessarily, but sort of the statement about the, you know, aren't costs going down over time? We're asking this distribution grid to do a lot more than it's done before, and that's why we hesitate to kind of promise this reduction of overall power costs when only a third of the bill is generation. Third of the bill is generation. That's where the power costs, that's where you see that the cost decreases compared to running existing fossil. The other two major components here, that, you know, we have to manage that all together. So it's it's hard to promise both this greatly robustly built-up distribution grid that's also going to be more underground, it's also going to be more wildfire resilient, and also promise bill declines.
Okay, thank you for entertaining my technical questions. Appreciate you being here.
Hello, thank you so much for the presentation and your time today. I just wanted to follow up on 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 other comments around and at trust-building and just anchor my comments in around trust-building, and I go back to the lovely Brene Brown, who reminds us some of the elements of trust-building, accountability, transparency, and integrity. And so I look forward to working with you all. I understand the targets were not met but are close, and I want to honor that. I also want to honor the the investment side of this conversation, the significant assets that have been acquired for wind and solar are significant. And so I do understand that cost, but I also understand the expectation that the costs were going to go down. So again, I also see a need for increased education because I didn't know prior to reading the packet that what really goes into the cost. And so again, I want to just honor that. I also wanted to lift up that moving forward, you know, the best apology is change behavior, so hopefully we can get there. But I echo Mark's concerns around the forecasting. And so and so I say, I appreciate being more conservative, and again, the best apology is change behavior. So no, I'm not going to be like, I'm telling you strongly, okay? You didn't make them before. I'm sorry, we don't have a pattern. So how do we, again, and that's why I appreciate, Ife, your comments around those 17 projects and the opportunity to really close that 25% gap. And so where can we get more transparency around those efforts along the way? And so that we're not waiting five years to have this conversation, but really having an interchange with our community and what are the ways that our community can even step up in that work? I think of CU, I think of our research institutions. You're not alone. And so to the Ryan's comments around a monopoly, you're a part of our community. And so we have expectations around partnerships that are deeper and stronger as we need to accelerate. Moving on, I do have just a couple of things. One, I talked a little bit about the investment piece. I didn't hear too much about the maintenance around that. So just always coming from Colorado Parks and Wildlife where deferred maintenance was significant, recognizing that these new technologies also require significant maintenance as they are new, right? And there are going to be significant challenges there which will increase our bill. So I also want to acknowledge and lift up that in addition to the investments being made, I would also love to hear more about the maintenance, the maintenance plan that's going to be associated with that. In addition, I'm going to that transparency, love to hear more about the community advisory panel, the work groups, how boards and commissions are being engaged again. We are a part of a larger ecosystem, and I would love to see more authentic, meaningful engagement. I'm grateful for those, Leslie and others, who have been holding it down and gate and showing up at meetings, and I'm eager for many, many more of our community to be active members of this conversation, which will require all of us to make significant changes in the ways that we interact with our natural world and respect that inter- and respect that world. I want to close out with one of the most important comments that I'm going to make about this, and that is water. I did not hear or see one thing about water in all of this. Energy, electric energy takes water. Natural gas takes water. And so does solar. Not as much, significantly less, but not as much. I need us to talk more about that intersection with water and electric and electricity and energy. I need us to deeply understand that when we are saying we want more electric, we are saying we are committing more of our water resources to electric. So when I hear we want more housing that are going to be electric, that means some of that water that would be your drinking water is going to go on to having lights on all day. So although I appreciate and I understand the challenges that you face, we face this as a community, and I'm eager for a broader conversation around our energy needs, our natural resource management integrations as we look at our retreat coming up. I know climate was an issue that everybody spoke on on the campaign trail, and I was also happy to see those who are already on council already talking about these initiatives. I'm grateful for the incredible staff we have through Jonathan, but I was disappointed not to hear and see anything about water. We have significant senior water rights. That's what's called in the indigenous world, paper water, as opposed to wet water. There is less precipita- I'm coming from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, y'all. I spent four years in a mini-masters essentially with Natural Resource Department, heard from them every month on what was going on, took advantage of every opportunity. And I can sit here and tell you, and that's why I ran on climate and cultural resilience. We must speak about the water intersect. So I look forward to working with you and pi- and ugh, not doing that, ugh! Not trailblazing either. What am I doing? What are we doing? We are evolving with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So in the the targets that we have in the settlement agreement, those were based on the currently or what was at the time the approved resource plan, is that correct? So we have these new targets for 2027 and 2030. Why do we believe that we're going to hit these new targets that are based on the resource plan when we couldn't hit the old targets that were also based on the resource plan?
Okay. Timing matters about how all this happened. The last resource plan was approved in 2018. The Boulder franchise was settled in 2020. Limited ability to change the outcomes there. there. The 27 and 30 targets, we have a lot of ability, we could plan to hit those targets that were forged there. Also, the commitment was much broadened to all the stakeholders that interact with a resource plan in Colorado. And it's a lot. It's probably three to four NGOs, three state agencies, two to three municipalities, all settled on this, on these targets, on parallel targets, let's call them, but in the same years. The commission approved that. Also, the margin to hit this is, as you can see, I mean, the gap is three to four million tons. It's a massive percentage on those targets. These targets were always close. Our understanding was that this was, part of the rationale for having these targets was to ensure that the progress was steady, and not just leading up to 2030. Because at that time, and still, state law required us to hit an 80% reduction by 2030. There's an argument that you wouldn't have to do a lot, and then you could take the last couple of years and then sort of really reduce the emissions. So my understanding was those targets were forged, partially to kind of create a steady, you know, incentive or pressure or target pressure to continue progress. We were fully planning to do that anyway, but it was sort of a higher level of confidence to have that struck into the agreement, to have that continual slope downward. So...
Thank you. I appreciate that, and the systemic changes that this plan represents. I share concerns, you know, particularly as communities across the front range look at electrification, not only of our transportation systems, not only of our heating and cooling of buildings, but we're looking at things like, you know, we're looking at a new rec center, swimming pools, you know, things that are going to take massive amounts of electricity in order to run properly. And how do we make sure that our grid is ready for that, and that we can still hit not just the targets promised in our agreement, but our sort of new shiny targets that are promised for 2027 and 2030? You don't need to answer that, but those are my concerns, and hopefully will be taken to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Great questions, everybody. I got one more, and then I think we may be done with you. Appreciate all of your answers. Mine is about the zero emissions communities. Really appreciate your willingness to consider that program that our staff has worked on really hard. So appreciate that partnership. And I saw you had a next step about filing for it later this year, which is great to see. But can you outline what the potential next steps after that would be, in terms of when might we be looking at new generation being built that we would be for the city of Boulder? Like, how far away are we from that if everything goes well?
Yeah, great question. So part of the thinking in developing that, that we worked with Mr. Lerman on, is the ability, so the last resource plan, I didn't talk about this a lot, but there's an RFP process in that, request for proposals. We've got 1,000 bids for generation projects. So as Holly mentioned, we have 17 new projects in this portfolio that's approved. So we're going to take a 17 out of, not every one of those is a unique project, but there's probably a couple hundred unique projects out of the 1,000. So that means there are remaining bids that we didn't use in our approved portfolio. And we also have, we also have a backup portfolio, because sometimes the bids do, sometimes they just don't come through. So we have kind of a, we have kind of a waiting list, if you will. So outside of our preferred, or, sorry, approved portfolio and our waiting list, there's still remaining bids on the list that can be negotiated with towards this. Generally speaking, these bids, the whole pool, were mostly aimed at coming online from 2026 to 2028. So presuming we get to kind of, you know, mutual business terms on this proposal, we take it to the commission, get approval on that, you know, it usually takes 10 months for approval on something like this. Conceivably, you could have a new generating resource that is directly attributable to the zero emissions community program, generating or storage, because we looked at solar and storage combinations. And there are remaining bids that are solar plus storage combinations. That could be conceivably in sort of the 2026 to 2028 timeframe, online generation.
That's helpful to understand. Thanks for that. All right. Any final thoughts? Seeing none, thanks again so much for joining us tonight, for answering all of our questions, and for the continued partnership. And we look forward to achieving all of these goals together in the next few years.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Have a good night. And with that, Alicia, if we could go to our next matter, please.
Of course, sir. Thank you. Our next matter on tonight's agenda is item 6B, and it is the update on state legislation.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And as Carl gets himself organized, I'll say that I know we had a conversation about what was coming up in the state legislative agenda, or some of the items that were coming down the pike. Today, we'll have continued conversation of some of the items that were just covered in a recent intergovernmental affairs meeting. So with that, hopefully, I bought you time to accommodate, Carl.
Well done. Thank you, Naria. Good evening, council members. I'm going to provide a brief legislative update, specifically focusing on state legislation. We're a little bit over a month through the state legislative session, four months long in total. We have over 500 bills that have been introduced. And we have roughly, if my count's right, about 25 bills that the city has taken a position on, mostly in favor, at least one of them in opposition. We're using your policy statement to direct us on what those positions should be. And we're also turning to your council's intergovernmental affairs committee for direction where the policy statement is not so clear. So this evening, I'm joined by two of our two lobbyists, Adam Eichberg and Will Coyne, who are participating remotely. And they will help me do a brief update on 10 bills. Nine of these are ones that we are already supporting. One of them, we have not taken a position on. And I'm going to start off with that. And we'll try to go through it all, and then take your questions if that works. Okay, so the first one is the transit-oriented communities bill. It has not yet been introduced. Boulder continues to regularly meet with the governor's office and sponsors to understand the implications and to share our potential conflicts and concern citizen. We've been told to expect that it could be introduced as early as tomorrow, early next week. We will see. We expect it will require, at least the introduced version, an average of 40 dwelling units per acre zoning density for transit corridors, with certain parcels like floodways exempted. Although, we wouldn't know until the state creates its map. Currently, we estimate that about 30% of Boulder could be subject to this average zoning density requirement. Here's what's surprising to us. Our internal calculations suggest that Boulder could meet this average zoning density requirement without needing to improve any rezonings. So that's new from the last time I spoke with you. However, two big caveats. We would need to rely on allowing the build-out of residential development to its maximum capacity in our industrial zones. This could be less than ideal. And secondly, we would lose the ability to subject development in parcels less than five acres to discretionary review. I think we all agree that our discretionary review process has brought about lots of important improvements to our development. Under the bill, as it is expected to be introduced, jurisdictions will be required to report on how they meet the requirements by the end of 2026, and how they meet this average zoning requirement, otherwise known as a housing opportunity goal, by the end of 2027. State enforcement will begin in 2028, and noncompliant municipalities will be subject to having their highway users' trust funds distributions taken away. So basically, we would not be getting our HUTF distributions if we were not in compliance. In 2023, that equaled $2.4 million. So as I said, this is, this is the one bill that we'll be speaking about that we have not taken a position on, and we're still trying to understand it. And since it hasn't been introduced, we haven't felt the need to actually take a position. But we will be taking it to council's intergovernmental affairs committee to have a more in-depth conversation. In fact, I would expect our next meeting of that committee will be primarily focused on that bill. The other bill that I want to speak about, also related to land use, and just so you know, there is lots of bills under the category of land use slash affordable housing. There's ones on kind of comprehensive plans, there's one on occupancy, parking requirements. There's another version of the accessory dwelling units bill. But the main one that I wanted to speak about is the one that's been introduced by Representative Ammabli. It's HB 241152, and it applies to specified cities, including Boulder. It requires that ADUs be permitted by administrative approval. So again, no discretionary review. I think that part of it is consistent with our current standards. It will prohibit local governments from requiring owner occupancy or additional parking. That part is different than what we currently require. It protects local governments' ability to regulate short-term rentals, allow larger or smaller ADUs, apply impact or similar fees, apply historic district standards, incentivize affordability or housing for the local workforce, apply other standards not specified in statute. And it also creates an $8 million grant and financing program for jurisdictions that adopt at least one of the following strategies that encourage ADUs: pre-approved ADU plans, incentivize affordability through lower fees and other incentives, ADU tech assistance programs, short-term rental regulations, incentives for accessible ADUs, and any other innovative strategy. That's all I have heard of. The grant program then would be available to cities to encourage affordable housing, to encourage long-term rentals for members of the local workforce, or to, quote, "support other demonstrated housing needs in the community." So quite a bit of leeway that we would receive and how we would be able to use the funding. So the city is in support of this bill. We were originally in a amend position. The intergovernmental affairs committee had an opportunity to understand the implications of the introduced version of the bill, and shifted us to a support position. So with that, I'd like to, again, hoping to try to get through these summaries before we have a discussion, if that works for you. And I'd like to turn it over to our lobbyist. I believe that Adam Eichberg is going to start. So Adam, if you had a chance to unmute, that'd be great.
Great. Thanks, Carl. It's nice to see all of you at council remotely. And I want to just start by thanking you for letting Will and I participate remotely. It's been kind of crazy down here at the Capitol, and the prospect of having to drive home in the middle of the night wasn't really all that great. But Carl asked me to cover a couple topics, starting with renters. The city has taken positions on several bills in this category. And I think that, you know, the way we're looking at is, this session really is focused on housing and folks who are renting. And I think it's really being driven by the fact that the last stat I saw, that there were 35,000 evictions in the last 12 months. I mean, which is, to me, a staggering number. The three bills that I want to highlight start with Senate Bill 146, which would create new tax credits for qualified renters. Single renters who make up to $75,000 would be eligible for up to $1,000 or to $1,000 worth of tax credit. And couples who make up to $150,000 would be eligible for $2,000 worth of tax credits. It would, you know, be a little bit mobile as income rise, but those are the baseline numbers that at least the bill was introduced as. I think the bill has probably a pretty good shot of making it through the process. There'll probably be a few changes, but I think that one's going to move through. The second bill I want to highlight in this category is House Bill 1099, which would eliminate eviction court fees. What a lot of the data say is that people who are evicted just end up not appearing in court because they can't afford to pay the fee to even fight their eviction. So this would eliminate the fee completely that tenants pay when responding to an eviction filing. Again, seems to be fairly broad support through the legislative process, and it's starting to move. And then lastly, in the renters category, is a bill to collect and study the data around evictions, and would require the courts to county by county do a monthly aggregate eviction data for people who were forcibly removed from their properties. And I think that, you know, there's been a lot of noise at the Capitol around the issue, and folks are responding by saying, look, please help us quantify exactly what's happening. And I think that, again, this data bill is going to be one of those bills that's going to move all the way through. It seems to have broad support. There isn't much opposition. So in the renting category, those are the three I wanted to cover. And then in the next category Carl asked us to cover is around gun violence prevention. And I know the city has been very active over the years in this space. There are, by last count, I think, something close to 12 bills either introduced or being planned to be introduced around gun violence prevention. I want to highlight just two of them. The first being Senate Bill 131, which would prohibit the carrying of firearms in what is being defined as sensitive spaces. It would apply to both open and concealed carry. And sensitive spaces is a very, very long list, but would include things like government buildings, parks, playgrounds, rec centers, public gatherings, hospitals, banks, and places like rallies and any other, essentially any place where there's a lot of people gathering. I think in the list of bills that are being considered, this one is going to have a lot of debate about it. And I would expect that the long list of sensitive spaces is likely to get pared down before the bill moves all the way through the process, if it does at all. Happy to go more into that if folks have questions. And then the other bill I want to mention is House Bill 1292, which was introduced two days ago. It is a bill that would prohibit the sale or transfer of assault weapons. A similar bill was introduced last year. It failed in the House Judiciary Committee. The House Judiciary Committee looks a lot different than it did last year because of a bunch of changes at the legislature. And by my count, that bill will easily sail through that committee and very, very likely move through the State House. The Senate looks a little different than the State House, and I don't yet know if it will make it all the way through. And I think that's really the place that we're going to spend a lot of time thinking about what the strategy is and how that looks. But those two bills, I think, are going to draw the most conversation in the GVP space, and we wanted to bring those to your attention. I'm going to turn it over to Will to cover, I think, three other bills in what we called the other category, but things that the city's interested in, and Carl's got us keeping track of.
Great. Thanks, Adam. Good evening, everyone. My name's Will Coyne. I'm Adam's business partner. It's nice to see you all. I'll try to be kind of quick, because I'm sure that folks have questions. In the other category, a few things. First of all, House Bill 1178 is the bill that would restore a local government authority to regulate certain pesticide uses. Many of you know, this is an issue that the city of Boulder has been involved with some time, and that we are actively supporting. The bill actually had its first committee hearing tonight, and will move to the floor of the State House. The bill, you know, this issue's come up a few times in the last couple of years. It's still got a challenge in the state senate, but we're more optimistic now than we have been in the past, that that law can finally be changed and some local control can be restored around pesticide usage. The next issue is actually coming, a bill coming from Boulder's own, Representative Junie Joseph, who is working with Colorado Secretary of State and a handful of other legislators to put in, establish a new regulatory framework for deep fake communications around elections and candidates. This is an issue that you all may have already heard of, may have seen some of the state media coverage, or even national media coverage around, obviously, AI and the use of deep fakes is really concerning to many, many people. And this is a first attempt at the state level, somewhat mirroring a bill that is, seems to be stuck in Congress right now, that I think actually our US senators are also involved with. But it establishes a basic framework and allows for civil penalties, and for the state to go after people that post deepfake content, that's not, content that is not labeled as such. It will require labeling of that kind of content online. I imagine that bill actually will probably pass and get through and signed, and probably not face a ton of opposition. not face a ton of opposition. Lastly, I wanted to mention Senate Bill 81. This is a bill that is starting in the Senate. It will be heard in a couple of weeks in its first committee hearing. And it's a bill that looks to speed up some of the phase-out of PFAS chemicals in consumer products. There already in law is a phase-out for a number of products on a timeline. This bill would look to speed up that phase-out and add a few additional products. And that bill's got a lot of support, but it's going to have a ton of industry pushback. And it'll be interesting to see if it can make it through the state senate. So those are the three that were on my list. I'll pass it back to you, Carl.
Excuse me. Thank you, Will. Thank you, Adam. So I'd like to open it up to council now. Mr. Mayor, one thing I will say is I wanted to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Schuhart, who did testify today on the restoration of local control for pesticides. This is the second time he's testified in the last two weeks. It's not always easy. You have to spend a couple hours oftentimes. And so just want to honor his commitment to doing that. It's really helpful, and he represents the city well.
Great. Well, thanks for that, Carl. Thanks, Will and Adam. Questions on NEBs? Yeah, I got Tina and Mark.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the rent credit. Are there, is there any thought to either study impacts or to restrict the credit to people who are in affordable housing, understanding that a landlord, if they're aware that there's more money available, might just raise the rent? And not really, even though the person who's paying the rent gets a credit, their net, it doesn't actually help them financially because we don't have any lever to control the rent on the top end. The rent will remain flexible.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting point. I have not heard that part of the conversation, but it's certainly something that we can raise with the sponsors.
Thank you.
Mark?
Just one question. In the memo that you sent around to us on these various pieces of legislation, you indicated our position on the AI-generated deep fake law as deliberating. And my question is, why are we deliberating and not supporting?
So the link to the report on all the bills that I included in the memo is constantly evolving. So I believe what happened is when you looked at it, we were deliberating. And since then, we had the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee convene, A, recommend that we update the policy statement to address bills like this. And then, of course, sequentially, they said, and let's support this bill. So that was how it happened. And yes, just an acknowledgement that that report at any given time is not going to be the reflection of the latest unless you're seeing it at that moment.
I'm glad that we changed our view. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none. I think that's all we got for you. So Adam and Will, really appreciate all the work you do for us down at the Capitol monitoring the rapidly changing situation. So appreciate all that effort. And Carl, as always, for you staying so deeply involved.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Thanks. Good night.
Have a good night. All right. Alicia, can we go to our first matter from Mayor and Members of Council, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Item number eight is matters from the Mayor and Members of Council. And eight A is the discussion to confirm council's position to decline or accept moving forward with the consideration of a ceasefire resolution regarding the Israeli-Gaza conflict.
Very good. And Matt, not to put you on the spot, but you were the one who requested this item. So this was a matter from this member of council. Would you like to start off with how you're interested in us proceeding on this or your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Aaron. So we just look out in the audience and we see signs and we see a lot of members of our community who are voicing their perspectives on an international conflict that is occurring quite a long distance from our landlocked city here in Boulder, Colorado. And it impacts some of you directly, some of you indirectly, some of you just through having a care for those that are experiencing difficult and/or traumatic or beyond that, just sort of impossibly difficult times in their lives. And so just want to understand, respect that that is what's going on and acknowledge that. But my goal with making this request was really simple. We've been hearing from community a request that we continue on our regular policy, that we do not weigh in on international matters and conflicts. And then other members of the community saying, no, no, you should, and you should use that part of your policy that allows you to start a public process to weigh in and to contemplate making a resolution or statement on international issues. And so really, all I want to do is bring this to our attention so we can make a decision. I think the community, we owe the community a decision one way or the other, and so we're not dragging the community along with indecision. And so I think that's what my goal was to bring it here tonight, was that we can make a decision one way or the other, to open a process, to pursue a resolution or not, in which case by then reaffirming that our default position is to not weigh in on international matters. And so I just want to open that up for council to weigh in on that tonight and also to just give community clarity as to where this body in Boulder City Council stands on that issue at this point in time.
Thanks for that. And just to be clear in terms of explaining to people how our processes work, we have a concept called a "nought of five." If council members want to add something to our work plan, it can't be done unilaterally, requires a majority of council to agree to that. And so then we look to council for a nought of five and see if there are at least five members of city council who want to engage in adding something to the work plan. So the question tonight in front of us is whether there are five or more council members who would like to begin a public process to consider a ceasefire resolution. And we can weigh in on this. So, Taisha, did I see your hand? Would you like to speak?
Okay. I didn't get in the queue.
You're the first hand I saw.
Yay! Who's at the top of the queue? All right. I'll start off by saying, thank you for holding space in our agenda for this conversation. I want to actually clarify that our current position is not the default position. It is the position that the previous council or whoever came up with that handbook took because this council has not only weighed in for Iraq, but this council has also weighed in on South Africa, on Myanmar. This council has even done financial boycotts, minimal, but there. So again, again, you can look it up. I was surprised to hear it as well because I'd only heard about Iraq. Then I find out, wait, y'all did speak on South Africa. Thank you so much. You did speak on Myanmar. Thank you so much. We are capable. We actually do. But we decide. And that is an investment to decide on international affairs. And I don't take that lightly as somebody with a master's degree in international education with a focus on international affairs. I deeply understand the interconnectedness with our city and not just from the 1.6 million that was referenced before, but we also have international students in our university, which is a part of our community. We have international employees and staff and residents who are part of our world-renowned, world-touching research institutions. We have federal agencies like NOAA and NIST. I just actually came back from NOAA, doing some trainings for them. And so I just say that to say, I believe there is a role that we should play. I am interested in having that broader conversation about what is the role of local councils in international affairs because of the breakdown that I'm seeing in our democracy, sadly. If the representatives who were elected, who had the actual authority and power to do their job, did their job and responded to the peoples, then I feel like we wouldn't even be here. They wouldn't be here. And I'm so proud of our senators. Thank you so much. Thank you so much because this is to for Israel. This is to for the hostages. This is to our collective future. And so I am hopeful that we can revisit that and not just for this. This is also climate. This is a climate issue that is going to affect us. The U.S. military is the fifth-largest emitter. We have five years. We are at the event horizon. As I just said, I was at NOAA. Apparently, PS, we're losing our currents? I don't even know. I don't even know. I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I'm saying this because we are at the event horizon and it is time to make bold statements about what we want to do as a collective and what we are willing to sacrifice. And so, yes, Mark, we have a lot on our plate around housing, around transportation, around homelessness and housed, around our climate. All of these things are interconnected. I didn't move to Boulder to be in a bubble. I moved here to be a leader. I moved here because we're audacious. Don't, don't yell. But y'all were good. So thank you so much. And again, I want to honor and again, I really want to express my love for the whole diaspora of the Jewish diaspora, for those who call for a ceasefire and those who do not. I understand pain and grief and intergenerational pain. I understand what it's like to have people want to kill you just for existing and breathing. I understand that viscerally through my bones. And so believe I fight with you, side by side, and with all of my panel, my councilmates as well. I do believe we have a role to play. We are impacting it. I'm on the Visitors Bureau. That's a significant international footprint as well. Not to mention the tech field that we host here, the medical field, the defense fields that we host here. Do not act like we do not have skin in the game here. You can decide you don't want to play, but please, do not act like we do not have implications internationally and we don't have an impact and we don't matter, that our voice collectively doesn't matter because it does. So thank you for this time. I am in for the consideration and also, again, recognizing that this would also require, going back to Carl and his team, because I'm thinking of Congo. See, my phone is all messed up. I even refuse it. Get another phone until this thing just dies dead because I know children died for this. I know they did. I see it now. I go to Sudan. And so when I said as an African-American before and somebody put me on fire for that, that's what I meant. I understand the intergenerational continuum that we are on, and I understand that the way that our country is positioning us right now is dangerous for all of us and our capacity to live seven generations from now here in this beautiful, beautiful place we get to call home. Thank you.
And thanks for that, Taisha. No, please, please, nothing in the audience. Other thoughts? We also don't all have to talk as well, but Nicole?
Thank you. I just want to kind of recognize again, right, our discussion around how we move forward from here. I really feel like people are not going to stop coming, whether we say no or yes tonight. There's just too much pain, and we see that. We see that in every person who's speaking to us. And I just want to note that, too. I see your pain. And thank you for coming and sharing it with us because it's too much to hold alone. What I would love for us to do is to find a way forward to dialogue through difficult international issues, to create predictability on when and where and how we speak for the community on international issues because it is a big responsibility. There's something that I read a while ago that really stuck with me, and I just want to read it tonight because it just, I'm feeling called to share this with you all tonight. It's a blog post by Rabbi Danya Ruttenberg. She wrote it on October 13th, 2023. It's called "A Lot of Things Are True," and I encourage you all to go and read the entire thing because it is worth reading. So I'm going to start with her words here. I'll let you know when I stop and start using my own words again. "These are my personal opinions, not those of my employer or anyone else. They're also not the entirety of my personal opinions. There are a lot of other things I think that are not reflected here. I'm really tired right now, y'all. It's been a lot these last many long days. I'm sure everybody's going to be angry that I'm not representing something fairly or clearly enough. Please do not yell. This is important and so much is at stake here, and so many of us are carrying so, so much love and care and also trauma into this conversation. Processed or not, epigenetic or not, we are all trying our best to feel our way towards a more whole world, one that honors all of our inherent dignity, one that has enough for everyone, is safe for everyone, gives care to everyone. We are all doing our best. I'm certain that I missed the mark somewhere. These are not the 20 commandments. There are some things to consider as put forth by one person." And I'll just read four of the points she made. One, "There is no justification for the mass murder of innocents. There is no justification for bombing a dance festival, for kidnapping elders, children, peace activists, gunning down families, burning houses with people alive in them, for posting the murder of a grandmother on her own Facebook profile for her grandchildren to see it. Hamas's attack was a war crime. Murdering Jewish children is not fighting for human rights. War crimes are not the path to liberation." Two, "There is also no justification for blowing up buildings without warning, for bombing hospitals, the bombing of children, for illegal blockades that turn tiny strips of land into open-air prisons, for unlawful killings, forced displacement, house demolitions, and land theft, abusing children in detention, restrictions on movement, dehumanization, and collective punishment over 55 years of occupation, and so much more." Three, "Hamas is not the Palestinian people." Four, "Netanyahu and his ultra-far-right government is not the Israeli people." Fourteen, "It is in both Netanyahu and Hamas's interests for you to take extreme positions. The path to Palestinian freedom and to peace and safety for everyone requires seeing everyone's humanity and rooting for everyone's liberation. That's the way out. That's the only way through." Nineteen, "At the end of the day, everyone must be safe, free, and allowed to flourish because everyone is holy, created in the image of the divine. Nobody's children should be killed. Nobody's." What's happening in the Middle East, these are my words now, has consequences beyond our borders. Spending taxpayer money on weapons that are killing women and children takes away from our communities, from our food, housing, education, healthcare, and climate resilience. The enemy is not each other. It is the global autocracy that empowers the oppressive tactics of ultra-right extremists like Netanyahu and Trump that feeds the military-industrial complex and that propagates the racist and capitalist systems that benefit from our anger with each other. I would welcome finding a way for our city to support an outside group, working on something that brings people together, that helps us direct our anger at the oppressive systems that are hurting us and some of us more than others, and that helps us find a common ground. In the meantime, maybe at our retreat, we can consider how to set up a way to weigh in on international issues because nothing about the world in which our community is situated is going to get easier with time, and we're all impacted by the things that happen locally and globally. If we don't have a way to help lead our community through international conflicts, I fear we and future councils will be facing these issues with increasing frequency. So I'd love for us to discuss our policy on international issues, perhaps as a retreat or even a work plan item, because I don't think it's going to be a quick discussion. But it is important, and this is all connected, and future councils will thank us if we can help find a way through."
Other thoughts? Or I can offer something.
No, go first.
Well, just saying, I appreciate everyone for being here and your passion for justice and making the world a better place is very evident, particularly for staying with us for two hours of Excel energy and state legislative issues. But just, I'd say, I don't think that this is something that we should take up. We have so many huge problems right here in our town of Boulder, Colorado. Dozens of people living out on our streets, people dying in traffic violence on a regular basis, and any number of major local problems and issues where the nine of us can have a very direct and immediate impact. And I feel that that is what we need to focus on as a council and that foreign policy matters, regardless of what they are, is not something that we should be spending time formally considering. So I apologize to everyone. I know that's not what you're looking for, many of you here tonight, but I do feel like we should focus on the problems that we can make a real difference on in our community. Matt?
Since I certainly made the request, I feel it's appropriate for me to weigh in just where my position is. I don't feel that my personal opinions or feelings about the Israeli-Gaza conflict or any international conflict should, I don't think they should transcend. or any international conflict should, I don't think they should transcend the role and jurisdiction of this city council. As Mayor Brockett pointed out, we have people dying right now in this community. A lot of them sadly. In December, we were at a vigil for over 50 unhoused individuals that had died in 2023. Those are right in front of us, right here, and it's important for us to be tackling those things. I worry about the slippery slope. At this point, there are 114 global armed conflicts, 45 in the Middle East and North Africa, 35 in Africa, 21 in Asia, 7 in Europe, 6 in Latin America. If we start down this path here, when will it stop? How do we define what is the threshold? How do we define when we do it, how we do it, how often we do it? I worry it's the cost of so many other things. Is it our continued conversation about police reform? Is it our continued conversation about Vision Zero? Is it homelessness? What are the things that we sacrifice and stop doing to pursue a plethora of more and more of these resolutions and time studied and effort in this dais to weigh in on those international issues when we're not saving the lives of an unhoused person that's going to die of Narcan this week or die of opioid overdose this week? Why aren't we fixing that? So, these are the things that I feel are important. My personal position on wanting the conflict in Israel and Gaza to end is profound. I want it to end just as much as anybody, but my personal opinion should not get in the way of how this city operates and the commitment we've made to this community to solve the issues that are directly in front of us. If we had a well handle on all of those, then say, "Have at it." But we are underwater and we are drinking out of a straw trying to breathe as we get through these issues that are in front of us. They are difficult, they are long-lasting and they require our full, undivided attention to meet the everyday needs of people in this community. So, I think we need to not move forward with pursuing a ceasefire resolution and continue to stay out of international affairs.
I have a reputation for always listening. I'm actually good with disagreement, though, because I don't think that, I don't agree with you and you might not agree with me, and it's okay with me because I want to hear. But I guess the question is, is are you okay if I say I want to stick with my lane, which is municipal dialogue, municipal projects? You're not okay. I'm okay with you feeling this, so I hope that you're okay with my vote. But if you're not, I just have to stand with why I was voted in, and that was to take care of municipal problems. And even after October 7th, people did not come up to me and ask my opinion on the Middle East. They didn't. They want to know, what are we going to do as a city council to make a difference in climate change, to do something about people experiencing homelessness and mental illness? So much suffering going on right here, right in this county. So, I am going to not want to go forward with this resolution. But I will say what I do want is for me to be a part of community discussions on peace. If that's not what you want, okay, that is what I want. And I'm willing to talk with anybody about peace and how we can come together once again as a community and not demonize each other and not be against each other because we disagree. I'm okay to disagree and still love people. I am. And I hope you are as well. And so, that is where I'm going to go. And my phone number is always there for people to call and discuss as long as we respect each other civilly and we care about each other, and that's the truth.
Yeah, Mark?
I just want to express my agreement with my colleague Matt's comments. I look at our work plan. I look at, if you make a list of the 10 most important issues in Boulder, and that list can change from person to person, but pick 10. We have solved none of them. We have made progress. We have made improvements, but we've solved none of them. And we are in a situation now where we want to do so many things and we are constrained in our ability to pay for those things. And those are all of the conversations that we need to be focusing on. As I said, make that list. We have solved none. We've been here for several months. We're going to be here for the next couple of years. And I'm not sure at the end of those couple of years, we will still have a list of 10 major items that we will have not solved. So, I have, you know, I have previously indicated where I'm coming out on this. I'm reiterating that now. I don't think that's our job and I think we need to simply make that clear and move on. Thank you.
Okay, Lauren?
I want to appreciate the words of Councilmember Adams that she shared with us about how interconnected we all are. The words, signs and emails from everyone, everyone in the audience. I would want to place this conversation in the context of other past and future council action. While no one on council has asked for it, I think we could unanimously decry the terrorist acts of October 7th and ask for a return of hostages. We are currently working on a statement speaking out against rising antisemitism and Islamophobia in our community. We should also be able to denounce the bombing of schools, the killing of journalists, the attacks on hospitals and the withholding of necessities such as food, water, shelter and medication for more than 2 million people. Historically, Boulder City Council has made statements, as Councilmember Adams said, against the Iraq War, South Africa, Myanmar. Clearly, we have the ability to make a statement here. In the words of a truly great man, "It is not just the conscious evil actions of one person that lead to catastrophe. It is also the small cowardly non-actions that exist in each and every one of us all the time." It may be convenient in this moment for us to use council rules as a shield to avoid weighing in on international issues, but it is not right. It is a cowardly action that fails both our community members and shirks the responsibility that comes with the platform and the power our community has given us. I understand and respect where my colleagues are coming from, but I believe this non-action is part of a greater willful ignorance that will be remembered by history as a systemic failure to speak up for people whose voices are actively being silenced, at least 28,000 of whom have lost their lives as a direct consequence of these atrocities. History will judge us not by the convenience of our choices but by the courage of our convictions and the actions we take in challenging times. I hope my colleagues will join me in asking city staff to work on a ceasefire resolution that speaks out against this dire humanitarian crisis. Thank you.
I don't know how I could improve on what Dr. Spears said, but I'm going to try a few words. This is an impossibly challenging issue and it is a local issue. That's clear looking at around the room today and at the last couple of meetings. Boulder residents and their families, loved ones and communities are suffering. The threat of rising Islamophobia, antisemitism and hate is real. We have to stand against it. And I agree with Councilmember Adams that we have a lot of skin in the game on this. I last talked about this at a campaign forum. It was Saturday, October 13th at the Women's League of Voters. And since then, I've focused on listening and it would be an understatement to say that I'm still learning. One thing that has become clear is that if we had a negotiated agreement that we were being asked to sign, this wouldn't be very hard, at least for me. But the reality is that going forward is not about making a decision, but it's about starting a process of doing the work, bringing this community together to create the right agreement, which hasn't been done. We would have to think about the qualifications that would go into an agreement. What will we say about the hostages? What will we reflect on with respect to the role of Hamas in the future of Gaza? What else for the rest of the region? What would our quality standards be for this? I don't think about this in terms of having a procedural problem. I think ethics require that if we decide something's important enough, we can change procedure. I don't think this is a problem of principle. I think that fundamentally, we could decide to do this. And I don't think it's a policy challenge so much either. I mean, we do take on bigger issues where we have ExxonMobil and Suncor in court right now. But I do have a problem and it's really the project management of this. And it's, my challenge is starting a project that I really am concerned that we're not resourced for, looking around this room, to do in a way that would not threaten to exacerbate tensions and to start. And in that context, I would just like to either remind you or underline that you have a city council here that's being paid for something like a handful of hours a week that's being expected to make transformational progress on homelessness, to do the same with affordability and accessible options for housing. It's letting a lot of people not be able, not only letting people live here, to create a safer, more affordable transportation system, to make changes in the way we develop our community to become compatible with the climate that we're not adapted to and to make concrete steps to improve our community's resilience, among other things. And we need to do this as council members while spending our time talking with community members and learning and formulating and trying to facilitate conversations on those topics and do this in a way that keeps our doors open to communication with the public. And so, coming back to the immediate question on our agenda, there are some things I would like to say yes to. I would like to say yes to us getting the right communication about Islamophobia, antisemitism and standing up to hate out and to get that right. I would like us to say yes to supporting ways to encourage in greater listening and understanding within our community. I would like to say yes to finding ways for our council and our city to give more people a greater voice, especially to our state and federal officials. And I would like us to understand better what would our quality standards and a process look like to resource a program of a resolution of this nature. I would also point out finally, if you had a council sitting here that was being paid a living wage, you probably have a council that looked differently and one that would have a lot more resource to be working on these issues and not making such hard project management trade-offs. I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thanks. So, I think what I'm hearing is to people who are interested in moving forward with this, correct me if I'm wrong, please, anyone else?
Mine is kind of a separate thing about having a broader conversation about how we engage in on international issues and how to move forward with that so that we're not trapped in this place in the future and that other councils have a way to move forward more quickly on international issues that are clearly of importance to the community.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, Nicole.
Mayor?
Teresa.
Procedural clarification. This is, because this is under matters, it would not be a vote. It would not be a raising of hands. Rather, you could seek, you could ask the question whether there is a nod of five to move forward.
So, I guess I'll go ahead and go to that now, if that's all right with folks. Is there a nod of five to move forward with this matter? And I guess this is about nodding or not nodding heads. Yeah. So, I've got a, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, a nod of two. I also just want to clarify that whenever this is communicated, I just want to make sure that it is not communicated that the council believes X, Y or Z. It is absolutely critical. I do not want to be on record as I agree with this. So, thank you so much.
Good. Okay. So, I think that concludes this matter then, right? So, thanks to all my colleagues for the discussion and thanks to everyone in the community for joining us tonight and again for your passion for making the world a better place. Okay, please, quiet. Why don't we take a couple of minutes to recess? Why don't we take a couple of minutes to recess?
Shame!
All right. I think we're ready to resume. We have one final item. Alicia, if you could take us to that, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our final item on tonight's agenda is item 8B. And it is the discussion on 2024 chats and walks with council.
Nurya, who's talking about this one?
I think that's me.
Is this you again, Matt?
It is.
Troublemaker.
But it's me certainly on behalf of the council engagement committee to which Tara Wiener and I serve and certainly were supported by Sarah and our team on staff. So this is coming from our committee in this sort of. We want to. With a new council, we want to check in with something that originally got started up in 2019 and then quickly shut down because of COVID and then got resurrected again in 2023. And these were chats and walks with council. And as you saw in the memo, there has been a string of them in 2023 and then a bundle of them also in 20 or in. Certainly, we have some planned for this year as well. And so what I really just want to touch on is, do we really, at the end of the day, want to continue these? I can say from my personal experience and maybe those that have been on council, these were great. Did CU South. We've done a number of other chats. There was a woo-ee one. These are just a great opportunity for us to strengthen our interactions between community and council. I think that it's appropriate in timing because we have this amazing grant-funded partnership with the National Civic League to focus on improving our meetings and overall engagement with council. And chats and walks with council were something we were already doing that the National Civic League said not only keep doing as a recommendation, but do more of it and make them stronger interactions. And so I think it's just synergistic that we're coming to you guys, coming to all of us here with, hey, let's do more of them. And by the way, this is also one of the strong recommendations that are coming to us by a national leader on improving our civic discourse. So it's important to think about the synergy there. And then, as you probably read in that hotline, this is just one of many recommendations that we could be employing. Our committee will come back to council at a later date. It's not scheduled yet on CAC about a larger conversation about those recommendations. And we'll start to have some of that conversation next Wednesday at a community town hall, which will be hopefully one of many town halls and other ways for community to have greater and higher quality engagements with council outside of the dais. So with that, I just sort of want to frame and see if this is something of interest. As you saw in the memo, there's a couple rough ideas that staff is already looking at. But I think we're open to a lot more ideas of different groups, events, venues from which to engage. And some of them may be appropriate based on certain ordinances or projects that we are working on. And others might just be, hey, we haven't really checked in with this community in quite some time in a meaningful way. Let's make sure we do that. So I think the list is kind of open-ended, resource-dependent, of course, and scheduling. And so outside of that, I maybe want to just offer a chance. If I missed anything, Sarah, if you want to pipe in, chime in on that. And if I missed anything, but then also get some council feedback.
That was great.
Thank you, council member Benjamin. My name is Sarah Huntley. I'm the Director of Communication and Engagement. The only thing I'll add is that we do recognize that many of you are working a job plus this. We're asking for an additional commitment. In order for these chats and walks to really work well, we need at least two council members at each one so that community members have a richness of the dialogue that's able to happen. So when we think about the number and the types and the times and the days, it's helpful to know what works best for you all as council members to really be able to participate fully. And if we need to titrate the amount of events we have or when we have them, we can do that and we can respond accordingly. But we've gotten very good feedback from people in the past who have had opportunities to participate in these less formal settings. So we're hoping that you might be able to commit to at least some of them. Thank you.
Matt and Tara as well on the committee. I'll just say, I find these to be one of the most effective and enjoyable ways of interacting with the community. So I say, bring them on, give us more, please. To the, keeping in mind just the time commitment that council members have. So obviously, we can't do one a month probably, but a few of them are good.
Yeah, I think what I like the best about them was it humanizes us and it humanizes our community. So it fights the the human nature side of us that wants to take sides and have tribes. And so relationships are the best way to fight that. So I thought this was one of our most powerful, most powerful things we did.
So if I could just prime us with, certainly, I just want to prime, oh, question. I just want to prime a question to council, but go for it.
I like them. I was unable to do any of them last year for various reasons. And I would certainly look forward to doing them again if we have the opportunity this year. So I think they're great.
Yeah, I haven't. I'm new, so I haven't done these, but I'd be really looking forward to it. I'd also be particularly interested in seeing if we can do something with schools so that we get parents' feedback and the experience of teenagers across different groups and how their needs are being met as families being raised. And a partnership I'm interested in just to, the fees of availability. I also really like this concept because a lot of people have a lot of thoughts, but we don't discuss many of them on our agendas with any frequency. And this is a way to give us that latitude to discuss something else. The other area I'm interested in is renters who are not in affordable housing.
Thanks. I'll mention, we did one with Fairview High last year or maybe the year before. That was a really great, one of the great walks. Ryan? Oh, yeah, Lauren, go ahead.
Thanks. Yes, I agree. I have really enjoyed these. I also was wondering, the ones that I've done have been pretty specifically focused and very formulated. And I also wonder about kind of a more open-ended version. I was listening to a community, about a community that had started something to combat the culture of loneliness that we have in our community. And it was that they had social bus rides and where the idea was kind of like, instead of riding the bus to go anywhere, this is like a bus ride that people are just doing together to like spend time together. I don't know. I just wonder if there's like a way that we can also kind of bring this to more people in a somewhat less formal way.
Banjo Billy.
I would totally do a Banjo Billy council ride. Thanks.
I have a question and maybe a couple of comments. The question, this seems in general to me like a really good idea, a no-brainer. What's, what are the costs or what are, what are reasons why we might say this is something we should stop?
Well, as you saw, the costs are pretty minimal. There's logistics, so there's certainly staff time of planning these in community. Why we wouldn't? You know, the times don't work for your job and you can't participate, right? I mean, that could be a personal decision. One could imagine that we're maybe not reaching the communities you want to and you would want to step out. I think there's certainly a ray of that, but I think the sky's the limit. Certainly, when we consider this not in the vacuum of just chats and walks with council, but in the context of the suite of recommendations that are coming from the National Civic League, that this plays, this is the sum of the parts of many recommendations that are intended to improve the quality of those interactions and our conversations with community outside of these more formal settings. So those recommendations will come shortly, but think of this as being part of, a sum of the parts that may be added in the whole.
Okay, thanks. It seems like a great idea and I would concur with what council member Marquist and Folkerts offered on youth and then just the more general unstructured. I think that is like probably, I mean, I'm new at this particular mode, but I would think in general, there would be a lot of value in having just, you know, come talk to counselors. And I would think if we can have help with just schedule, literally scheduling and putting on calendars, yeah, there might be a chance to really increase the number of these touchpoints. So I'd enthusiastically participate.
I just wanted to offer one other observation for council member Shu Hart's question. We've been in this journey of experimentation with these, right? So when we first started, they were very open-ended. We just did them in different parts of town. There was no necessarily assigned topic. We didn't invite specific audiences. And some of them, we got a lot of people. I mean, the one I can think of the most was connected with the What's Up Boulder event, and we had like 80 people trying to manage. But then there were others. One, we held, two people showed up. And council members were like, we're going to have to up the amount of participation in order to make this worth our while. So then we started doing things where we would really focus on communities that we hadn't heard from and making sure that they're coming. But I think what we've learned is that a mix of different kinds of events is what people want. Some people want a topic-specific event. Some people want something very social, like you're recommending. And other people want to be able to just come and fill a board of their ideas that are not on council's agenda or topic list already. So we'll just continue to iterate and evolve and experiment. And as council member Benjamin said, the National Civic League has some interesting ideas about how to actually structure the room and facilitate those conversations that's also a little different than what we've done in the past. So it's a, it's a time for us to try new things and hopefully the community will find those worthwhile and you as council members will find them worthwhile.
Thank you. So I'm a huge fan of this type of work and effort. I'm also a big fan of being strategic about what we're trying to do and the outcomes of these and who is getting served by these. And so I think of not only time of day and day of the week, but I also think geographically to the point of, you know, where are we reaching different parts within our community? I appreciate the renter conversation as a renter here. And again, not just those who are participating in the low income. 50% or 54% are renters. I also would like to lift up other types of stakeholder groups, like our affinity groups. So I think of like Out Boulder and some of the incredible work. I mean, they already host hikes. So I'm just wondering where are the opportunities we can push into existing and partner around existing things and not just having things that we're creating, things and pulling in? So how do we have that dynamic pull-in, push-in kind of perspective? And then another group are our outdoor recreationalists, which are quite significant in so many different ways. There is like the World Count Day for the birders and there's the hiking and there. You know, we just, I would love to engage that community a bit more. I didn't hear from them as much on the campaign trail and I know that they are a significant part of our community. And to Sarah's part, I really love, you know, in Colorado Parks and Wildlife, something that they did exceptionally was the community dinners. And I just would love us to explore more barbecues with, you know, the Gruce Creek Association or the, you know, I just, those informal times where we can share food and culture and relationships together are also very powerful. But in general, I'm just a huge, huge fan and just want to make sure that we're really strategic about it and, you know, again, making sure that we're collecting information from those who participate. Thank you.
Council member Adam said a lot of what I was thinking, so I'm not going to repeat that. Just the event that came to mind was, I think you and I, Matt, were at Naropa at a student event that they were holding, kind of a, you know, welcoming new student event. It was a really great turnout because that's where people already were. And so we went and met them there, had some great conversations, had a chance to meet and get to know people. So I think the more that we can do of going to spaces where people are, as long as we're welcome there and people are interested in having us, those are great ways for us to connect with folks. So I'd love to see that in some student events. And also, I love bowling at the connection, so just going to put that out there.
Well, thank you. That is music to our collective ears that you guys want to continue moving forward with this. I will say that this wasn't your only chance to sort of weigh in on ideas, topics, groups, communities, locations, it's just sort of, hey, prime. So I think, you know, either through staff or our committee, one way we'll reach back out as we formalize this to kind of say, hey, if you want to continue thinking about this in a way to share those ideas so that we can plan them and get them on the books because they do require a bit of a runway to plan and make sure that they're well attended. So the sooner we get those ideas from everybody, the sooner we can get that going. So you'll hear from us again. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Great. Yes, ma'am. Teresa?
This is, if you've wrapped up this topic, I just have a quick point of clarification.
We, I think we have wrapped up the topic.
Great. So this is the council handbook. You all have it. I hope you've reviewed it. I heard something tonight that indicated, some of you might not know, that this is all enshrined in our charter or our code. It's simply excerpts. So this isn't a standalone book that is just some arbitrary set of rules. These are all things that a city council has passed into law for our city. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, appreciate the clarification. All right. Any final thoughts before we finally wrap up? Lauren?
Can I have a follow-up question on that being, could any city council modify the majority of those rules in there?
So this council handbook has a combination of charter provisions and code provisions. The council is free to amend the code. And that includes the council procedure, which is enshrined in our code. A charter amendment, a change to a charter would of course require a vote by the people.
And I'm going to guess that some of the comments that you heard were probably related to weighing in on international issues. Is that a code section or a charter section?
That is a code section. That came from 1986 where the council directed the city attorney to develop some rules so that council would not have to weigh in on foreign international policy except in particular limited circumstances. And so that has, that was adopted at that time by that city council and has remained since. This council could make a different choice. Thank you.
Taish, did she have something? That's fine.
And again, I'm still acclimating to our rules. I'm so sorry. I had a flight this morning in the East Coast at 6:45 a.m. So I am on the literal strudel bus to just make it through the rest of this day. Having said that, I'm still trying to navigate when it is appropriate to talk about things. I know we have this surprise rule and I can't wait to revisit it. But in the interim, I just need to bring up some of the racial incidences that are continuing to happen in BVSD, going back to having a deeper relationship with the school district. Our parents, our black parents are struggling right now. The incidents are getting worse and worse. So as we have this declaration on Islamophobia and antisemitism, I also just want to remind us that black, anti-blackness is still occurring at exponential rates. It is not getting better. It is getting worse. Children are having water poured over them. I cannot inward, left and right, every single day. And so again, I know that we are not BVSD, but we are the parents. We are the educators that work there. We are also trying to make sure that our city is culturally resilient. And so I just wanted to make sure that was on people's radar screen as an issue because I know we've had a lot of conversation around that declaration and I really wanted to honor and obviously support that full-heartedly. But I also wanted to just remind us that these incidents, as well as the Patriot Front who came and protested at a drag book reading for children. This is dangerous and it's in our community and it's right at our doorstep. And so I just wanted to, again, lift this up as, and again, I'm happy to talk about procedure and I apologize if I mess something up. But I just, in these times, I would love us to be able to talk about some of the things that we're seeing that isn't in an informal agenda thing, but is it going to impact our work and the ability to do all of the incredible decision-making, collective decision-making that we're going to need to do? And when people are afraid, and we've got people afraid on so many different fronts, it just makes our work that much more challenging. So regardless of where we go on the ceasefire resolution, I am hopeful that we can have a discussion on those conversations of bringing our community together and holding space where we can have really meaningful conversations. So just wanted to say that. And again, thank you for the opportunity to serve with all of you.
Okay. Thanks, Taish, for that. Any other final thoughts? Seeing none, all gavelists closed at 9:26 p.m. Thanks, everyone. Take care.